Thank you for letting me in, Allison. But you're on mute.
Yeah, it actually wasn't me this time.
Audrey?
Yep.
It wasn't me.
Okay.
I was trying to keep you out.
Actually, put me back then. I'm having, I'm actually having a difficult day work-wise, so.
Okay.
Want to kick me out, that's okay.
All right.
We'll just decide everything without you.
Yeah.
Oh, you do anyway, it's okay.
Yes.
Actually, we can't make any decisions.
That's correct, it's just a workshop. That's correct.
I found a, um, there was a Facebook memory that popped up yesterday, which was me in 2016 ranting about the town and how I had just come from a select board workshop where they had decided everything and it wasn't live streamed. It was like, nobody appears to be taking minutes. It wasn't livestreamed. We went through all this time in the budget committee and then I just watched as, you know, five select board members finally revealed what they actually think about the conversations they had been listening to and apparently this is where it all gets decided, folks. And you bet I was all wound up. And I was like, oh, look at that, we do livestream all of this stuff now. It kind of made me feel like.
See?
Oh.
There is progress.
That's not even controversial anymore.
There you go.
So.
Well, it's called progress. I guess.
Right, it's like, and five years later, here.
For all.
Well, we read about other things instead.
Yeah.
For all seven people that are watching, they're really excited you did.
You know, all the town directors, yeah.
All the.
Oh, they'll be, they'll be.
Yeah, me too.
As opposed to the other, as opposed to the other 5,000 that are going, phew, I'm glad they're doing it and not me.
Yeah, you got that right. Okay, we're just waiting for Taylor.
Morning, Bill. You look, you look serious this morning.
He's in a hurry.
Yeah, it's all an act.
They must have, they must have a class on that in law school, right?
I had somebody say once, called the office, I don't know why, I was walking to my office somewhere downtown and they called in just to say, I just saw Bill walking down the sidewalk and he looked mean. I was just walking.
Yep, it happens.
I come from a line of Puritans, so we just look dour all the time.
Well, there are times when a lawyer is on stage. This, Taylor.
Hey, guys.
Hello, Mr. Benzie.
I'm, uh, I'm driving back from a job in Searsport, so I'm hands-free for now. I'll, uh.
All right.
I'll show you my beautiful face once I get home.
All right, thank you. Okay, well, we have our four select board members gonna make it, plus Bill and Audra, and then the backdrop, we have our directors, I see, on the waitlist for questions we have as the primary focuses workshops to discuss the FY22 budget. But before we get into budget due schedule, we've asked Bill to, because of his schedule, come in first and we had talked in the select board meeting about just, in this, in this workshop, just reviewing the status of where we are with the challenges and the, in terms of trying to prepare the documentation for the crane support, uh, tannery referendum for June. So maybe Audra slash Bill, um, could you just give us a, a status on, on where that whole thing has transpired with all the challenges that have evolved? Thank you.
Yeah, so since, um, the meeting on March 23rd, we've been going back and forth with, um, Crane Sport Principal Michael Mullins to try and hammer out the details of a purchase and sales agreement based on, um, the concept plan that he submitted with the inclusion of 10 to 12 residential dwelling units that, um, originally Michael proposed in the top, the sort of northwest corner of the site where they're, um, on the, on the plan that we received in October 16th, there were four workshop buildings. And that, um, that was sort of the proposed location of residential dwelling units. So sort of apartment, townhouse-style apartments. And, um, as we sort of have gone through the process of going back and forth with, um, Michael on what it would take to get a purchase and sales agreement ready so that it could be looked at by voter, you know, we could put something on the warrant, a straight, um, up or down, yes or no on the purchase and sales agreement, have that agreement ready for voters on the date that, um, you'd all be voting to put it on the warrant. It's just become very clear that, you know, the addition of housing is made it incredibly complicated and we're not going to be able to have it ready by the April 20th meeting. And there's a number of reasons why it's, it's become really complicated. Most of them have to do with the financing that, um, Michael would need to seek because the addition of housing is more than double the cost of the project. And, um, he would seek separate financing for the residential development as opposed to the rest of the site development. So there's, there's that, that's been a complicating factor. There's sort of the relationship between the town and the developer in that, you know, we would be utilizing the remaining $165,000 for our cleanup grant to, um, help with the site development. So there could be a V-Rap over the site, um, and, you know, we would be able to sort of, um, walk away from it and the developer would have a property that for all intents and purposes is deemed by the DEP and the EPA as a, a clean, developable site. And that just means that that relationship between the town and the developer is, is a much more deeper partner, partnership where we're involved in the project for, you know, quite an extended period of time and that's, you know, quite a, quite a bit of exposure for both the town and the developer and just being at a stage where, um, you know, he wasn't able to sort of nail down the details of financing, of dwelling units, of, um, you know, the phase development of the site and, um, you know, the timeframes for how that was all going to happen. Uh, it just kind of led to a situation where we're not going to have the level of detail in a purchase and sales agreement that, you know, we've been asked about by the public in time for April 20th. Do you have anything to add to any of that, Bill?
I think you pretty well covered it. I could get into some of the specifics of things I was concerned with, but they're, they're sort of all consequential to what I would just outline. Sometimes the devil's in the details of some of the drafting, but, um, Audrey's covered it.
Okay, the, um, the, uh, it sounds like, you know, one of the key factors you mentioned, Audra, this, this rang a bell in my head was the financing challenge. If there's a financing for a segment of what was called affordable housing, 10 to 12 units, whatever, that corner, um, is different from, um, the financing of the workspace buildings and the rest of the site that effectively creates two, two sites, especially if you're dealing with hard financing. Because I believe Bill, um, uh, which is a lower interest rate, which lowers the cost of the housing, blah, 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 that, that they would preclude any connection with any commercial activity. Is that correct?
Right.
That's big. Allison, go ahead.
I mean, it seems also, I mean, this always seems like kind of a, a, a far cry for June, just because we, there's a real complexity in asking voters to approve something that the zoning ordinance doesn't allow. Um, and so I, I, um, sorry, I haven't Mason is remote schooling today in the same room and he's requesting that I use headphones.
That's okay, that's okay, I have a cat here, so don't worry.
Just, you know, Mason, that won't eliminate the sound of my voice, it will only eliminate the sound of their voices. Okay, is it, are their voices bothersome too? Um, sure, yep, I'll put on headphones in just a second here. Um, uh, and so I don't, it, it seems like both of the major candidates for the property and most of the enthusiasm from the select board did surround housing, you know, a need for housing actually on the, on the first floor. And so, um, my main focus has been wanting, I'm wanting to ask voters something, um, for the June ballot, just feeling like there's been so many years of planning that's gone into this and that what always happens is the select board kind of chickens out when there is something viable and voters never actually get to weigh in. I don't really like straw poll votes, but I don't know, considering the fact that it just, is there any value in asking voters something, um, whether it be, would you support housing on the first floor? Or maybe, it seems like we're probably just gonna have to go back to the drawing board a little bit because we're gonna end up with a new select board. I don't know, I hate to give up on asking.
Bill.
Anything, but what are your thoughts, Bill?
Well, I appreciate the point and I just want to share my experience, my sort of personal experience because I have been through a couple rounds on Apollo and if there's one thing I have learned in the last 13, 14 years, 15 maybe, that Apollo has been a topic is that, and that's one of the problems that today to move forward is, uh, the requirement of, uh, the interested people and there's quite a few different groups of interest, requirement of specificity, what exactly is it we're going to be approving? I think, uh, I'm not sure there'd be much value in the general question about, do you like commercial use, do you like residential use? I think the package as a whole, unfortunately, from my experience, not unfortunately, but it has to be worked up with detail so they know exactly what's going on because there's so many variables. Even from your vote on March 23rd or 2nd, whenever it was, just trying to have, um, Crane Sport pivot and deal with the multiple issues that arose to add residential to their proposal, um, even though they pretty much had a very evolved proposal, has been too much of a challenge to get done. So that's my, my two senses, um, the public has required specificity repeatedly on the site.
Yeah.
I agree with that to a certain extent, but having, um, you know, you've viewed this very much internally from the perspective as filtered through town government. And I don't always feel that that's been a very representative voice and there's been, oh, you know, a lot of us from the outside. I've, I've been watching the Apollo tannery situation unfold for actually longer than 15 years. And so, um, I, I think that from the internal town government perspective, you hear mostly from, um, I, I don't like the term vocal minority, but it sometimes is, um, and the, the level of detail required is not the same in the, for the, you know, entire general public a lot of the time, for a lot of people who don't show up at meetings. It was for years and years, we committed to cleaning up this property because we were gonna sell it and it was gonna, you know, go back on the tax rolls and it was gonna fill the, fulfill these economic development goals. And that has been the basis of everything, every vote that ever has actually been taken and every bit of town planning that's ever actually happened. There's certainly been many conversations and groups and people that have, that have voiced their, you know, voiced otherwise, but, um, I don't know, a, a big part of me thinks that we owe it to the community to just put out a proposal that complies with all of the zoning, um, and just say, here, wrote it down if you, if you want to. But I can, you know, I, I can see that we don't have consensus on the select board to do that and that's probably, you know, speaks up to the lack of consensus perhaps in the rest of the community. Um, but I would just, I just think that maybe what we've shown here is that housing is really complicated at the tannery. And if there's anything that I maybe learned through this, it's that as much as I want to see housing there, our efforts to force it in revealed a ton of problems and that it's possible that all of the initial planning that had gone on from previous select boards and the comprehensive plan and all of that. Maybe they were right that it's best suited for commercial development and that we should focus on trying to take revenue from, you know, some sort of mixed-use commercial development and allocate that toward housing rather than try to force housing, um, into this because I, the purchase price being offered with the original proposal is not insignificant and, um, $250,000 could go a long way towards funding some kind of other, um, housing project, but I know that can't all be decided today and it seems like no matter what, we've gotten ourselves by trying to deviate and, and say, hey, can we, can we throw some housing in here? We've kind of put ourselves in the corner where we, where isn't, they're just, realistically, there is not time to get something reasonable on, on the ballot before, for June. And so we'll just accept that and move on to do something in November.
Well, we'll take this information clearly till next, two next Tuesdays meeting because it is a, there is a scheduled public hearing on this matter in terms of a warrant. But with this information, yeah, this, it feels like, um, bottom line is, um, with all the best intentions, we've got 10 pounds in a five-pound bag in hindsight. Uh, and that's specifically because of the complication of financing, which is huge among the other lists of Audra and Bill represented. So, um, yeah, we are, yeah, we, we are at 11th hour. Um, we got, what, four F's today for working days until the next meeting, so nothing is gonna change between now. If I don't think, correct me if I'm wrong, Audrey, Bill, but the complications, it doesn't say, we, so, bottom line is, to me, yeah, I'm just frustrated as Allison because I was really looking forward to, you know, making progress on getting the public's input, or there are legislative body telling us what they like or don't like in terms of the proposal like this. Um, it's, it feels like it won't happen in June, but doesn't mean we have to, certainly don't want to take the magnification of this, of this need to define what we're doing with the tannery and put it on the table someplace. I'm not gonna support that and we're gonna keep working forward to, to bring us to closer to, uh, to the next hurdle, whatever that may be. And it, yes, to Allison's point, it probably will be with a new select board. Obviously, we can't, uh, commit, and as a current select board, to future, um, obligations of the, the next select board, which will have, uh, obviously two new members. As frustrating as it is, um, I, it's, it feels like, um, it's gonna be very difficult to, challenging, say the least, to get something substantive to the voters that we can rely on as being a good working document. The last thing we'd want to think about doing is rushing it to the point where, um, there are too many what-ifs in the documents that we would hope would, um, work their way out logically would, uh, with a good partner, uh, like Michael. But that's not the risk I can recommend, uh, to the voters at this point in time because that financing thing is huge. The other things, um, that, 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 they're big, but they're not as huge that financing thing. That's, 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 that, that, that has to be wrestled to the table a big time, uh, with that, with that proposal. So, uh, and I've said unless Taylor and Mark wanna make any comments, please feel free. Um, but I think we'll be discussing this on Tuesday, the 20th, because it is again, a public hearing item and a potential warrant, um, but it has, um, some clouds that have appeared.
I, I'll wait until Tuesday, but I, I wouldn't be, I wouldn't object to a straw poll about what the, what the general public wants because we have not heard from the majority. We've only heard from.
Even there, Mark, Mark, we have a bit of a problem because to get a warrant, we have to prove warrants by Tuesday night. That's the last day we have.
I, I understand.
But I agree with.
Not straw polls, we, I.
Non-binding.
But I don't know, that's a tough one. I kind of agree with.
We can, we can address that later, but I would agree. I would, I would love to do a straw poll, but like any poll, it has to be an effective poll. But, uh, I, I think we lost Taylor's probably moving to his, uh, other location. So with that, I, I, I thank you, Bill, you, um, Allison, before I close this piece, do you have something?
Yeah, I just wanted to quickly say that, um, I know this has been a lot of extra work for, um, you, Audra, and for town staff and that, like, I don't, it, it's frustrating for all of us, but at the same time, I feel really, um, positive about the fact that we actually have gotten viable options for people. And I know that every, whenever we do this kind of stuff, it makes a lot more work. For you guys, it's a lot easier to say that things aren't possible and to just kind of kick the can down the road sometimes to another committee and that's why it's gone on for this long, is that this kind of stuff, it's just a huge amount of work. And, um, so I just really appreciate the, like, tenacity and the willingness to kind of try to be creative and, um, I know you already have a huge amount on your plate and, yeah, just, yeah, thank you.
And I would, I would make the recommendation because there's three of you on now who are going to be on the select board after June elections. That if we can avoid going back out to RFP for this site and doing this all over again, that's desirable because I'm gonna, okay, I'm gonna be blunt and say it, Camden in this site does not have a good reputation in the development world and we were lucky to get any submittals whatsoever on this site. And the more that we keep going out and the more we keep saying, we don't like what we have, we want something different, the harder and harder it's going to be to get any sort of interest in this site. So I would just make the point that, um, you know, we, you know, we're gonna have to have a, the discussion about all of this with two new select board members. Um, but the more that we can avoid sort of retreading this ground over and over again, the better it's going to be for the community, the better it's going to be for the future of this site. Um, and I know that, you know, things might change, um, with a new board and, and the direction that everybody wants to go in, but if I can kind of throw up one caution, it's, it's that.
Yep, yep, I, I would 100% agree with that, but we'll have to see where it goes, of course, um, uh, as we go forward because we're not gonna deal with it now, but I, yeah, I, I, I think a lot of great work has gone in since, um, the, the receipt, procedure, uh, uh, four proposals and, and, uh, and, and the, and the workshops we've had and the, and the input we've had, yeah, I, yeah, I would agree 100% Audra. And it may, yeah, rebidding, yeah, if that's, well, my opinion would be, uh, I, I don't think the reception committee out there is very large in the industry. But anyway, with that, um, let's, let's move on to our primary function, which is budget review. And Mr. Kelly, you're welcome to stay if you really want to be bored. But, um, please, uh, thank you for your time, Bill, and, uh, and squeezing us into your schedule, it's important, obviously. Um, that, yeah, Taylor's back, coming back on board. Um, so we will.
Promoting Jody to a panelist as well.
I'm sorry?
I'm promoting Jody to a panelist as well.
Yes, you, yes, you have our permission.
Hey, Jody, you just got promoted. How, how wonderful is that?
I know, I know, it's.
A promotion, a promotion that you probably don't want.
Thank you for the honor.
Uh, Taylor, are you active? Can you hear us? And I don't care about the visual thing, but there he comes. No, that's not there, there he not comes. I think he's connecting on here, but, um, okay, while, while we're waiting for Taylor to reconnect, um, Audra, I think, um, let's talk about a little bit of Bill's overall procedure as we did last year about doing the budget. Um, obviously, we have, um, your recommendations, the budget committee recommendations and, uh, in front of us. And, uh, I, I would propose that we, um, go through departmental budgets first and then recycle to the summary of, you know, expenditure summary, revenue summary and, and of course, at that point, we can discuss things like, um, uh, reserves and funds and undesigned restricted reserves and just general topics like that, so we can cycle that way. Does that, does that sound reasonable to everybody? Allison?
I mean, that's what I tend to want, want to do too, but it is also the same process that leads every single year in the budget committee to, um, you know, uh, an existential crisis at the end where we, you know, we go in to the, the details and it's like, $40,000 for the library, we love reading and all these things and then you get to the end and we want a flat budget. So I don't know if it makes any sense for us to try to tackle some of, any of that at, at the beginning to say, you know, where, where are we in terms of general alignment with Audra on the, you know, overall increase or?
We can certainly make the, um, the short speech from Jody or Audra to tell us, given the town manager's budget and given the budget committee's input on saying what the bottom lines are for each, uh, we can certainly do that because there is, and that's, I know it's, it's, is missing the, um, uh, one item, the revenue for the budget committee. But, um, we can do that. Jody, could you just give us a summary of, um, the revenue expenses totals for the budget committee and the, um, select board and, 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 you know, just so we can see the differences in the percentage increases or decreases they represent?
I mean, I can read, I did, I understand what they all did. I'm just asking, are we generally, do we want to have that conversation ourselves? Are we basically feeling like, are, are we gonna be pushing for a flat budget at the end of all this or are we? That helps to frame the conversation.
I, I know. I, well, first of all, you have to specify what the difference is right now, what we would have to reduce to do that. Um, I don't recommend to do that. I recommend we do a bottoms-up budget development and see where it is and then we can, we do have some options to, that we've always said in fact, in past, well, in past budget discussions, we've always kind of said as a, it's not a policy, but a general guideline to stay with inflation and no more. Um, and I assume, um, that's why I asked for the total, was I assume we're still within that guideline. I, I'd love to see it zero or negative. Um, whether that's feasible or not, I really, I don't think I can answer that question at this point in time. It depends the magnitude of the differential.
I mean, I, yeah, I'm not asking for a zero increase budget and I don't believe that we should. I'm not sure that staying with inflation is necessarily reasonable either. It just seems like sometimes we, in the, in the minutia of all of it, we miss the conversation about, like, in general, are we in an agreement? I would say I'm mostly in agreement in general and with the increase that's proposed. But I don't, if, so as long as a majority of us or half of us aren't feeling like, you know, something different, then I guess we, it makes sense just to proceed the way.
Yeah, I, I, I would, I would.
Department by department.
No, I get your point. It makes, it makes a lot of sense, but I think that way when I think about budgets. Mark, why don't you give us your input?
I, I was very pleased with the way that the budget meeting came out until the last meeting, of course, where they couldn't finalize the last decision, which is something we'll need to deal with. But I thought the budget sessions went really well, I thought they're really planned out and the decisions were made were quite good. So I don't know that we need to revisit all that. And let's, let's look and, and as, according to flat budget, it, it's not reasonable because in order to have a flat budget, you would, you obviously have increases in salaries and, and charges and. you obviously have increases in salaries and in charges and stuff, and to have a flat budget means you need to cut other places. And I don't see that as being a
Yeah.
particularly reasonable situation.
Yeah.
All right, let's, let's, um, uh Taylor, are you on?
Yeah, I am, um, I agree with what Mark said, I, you know, I don't, I don't feel the need to be tied to a flat budget. I I don't think we're in a position where that's a requirement for us. And I would much rather prefer, I think that the budget committee did a good job. For the most part, I'm pretty happy with where the budget committee's recommendations stand. Um and I would prefer to just look at this in comparison by department or in some sense, you know, not tying it necessarily to needing to come out of this with a zero increase.
Now, we need to be frugal from the start, but let's, I I would suggest, we, as I said earlier, we will go through it by department, then then cycle back to the 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 revenue page, um and then then with that, we can cycle back to um net net where we are, and if there are, there are a macroscop decisions we need to make, we can discuss those at that time.
Just want to add to that, as we go through, there are some things that have, you know, changed or other requests that have come in or other information that's come to light.
Right.
Between when the budget committee's finished and and your review that I just want to bring up.
Sure, okay. Is that by department and category, though, correct?
I'll go, yeah, I'll go by department as you go through.
Well, why don't we, why don't we just go into the of the expense, the the uh the uh general fund and the expense department, starting off with uh general government administration and finance page. Which, as my word, if you want to drag that up, we can, Audra or or Jody, but uh this basically, uh that the budgets of the town manager and the budget committee are identical at a total of eight hundred and forty seven thousand dollars. Correct, Jerry? Just go, yes.
Correct, yes, I'm sorry.
All right, you know, you nodding words, this is a workshop. Uh any select.
There's no increase on and on from the department and all the way up to the budget committee for admin.
Okay, any questions, select board members, uh Taylor or Mark, uh Allison, on this budget item? Uh I I don't. On the. Say what?
I'm all set.
Okay, uh Allison or or Mark, do you want to, do you want to scan for a second and see if there's anything here you want to discuss or have input from the from the department head?
And the department head in this case is Audra.
Exactly, exactly, yeah, she's the department head of department heads.
Um, I guess just from a, like a um broader view in terms of of staffing, um I see a lot of the time, it it feels like you, in particular, Audra, are taking on a lot. And what I mean, I'm I'm imagining there's, there's always something you could do with like more staffing. Um and I'm not suggesting that we just throw money at the budget, but I'd kind of be curious to hear what your um interpretation is of how close we are to meeting somebody else. I mean, I see you doing um the website, doing you know, newsletters, things like that, there, there are certain things that we have repeatedly said our goals, um you know, like a, like a town newsletter, like more communication. And it seems like, um, I mean, I experience it too, a lot of the time, I think, oh, you know, I could just do a little bit more, and I see you doing that, where you're like setting up the webpage, because you're the kind of the best, I know Janice does a lot too, but um if we realistically want to get to some of those goals that we've been telling people for years, um hold on, Mason, just give me one second. Um then, do we need more people? Because I want to see you being able to do like the things that, you know, only you can do, I guess.
Yeah, and I've thought about like having a communications person. And I actually did work in a municipality where we had communications people, and I've kind of thought about, would that would it be, would my time be more efficient? But the problem is, I'm still gonna be the one creating that content, so yeah, it would save a little bit of time, because I don't have to like, you know, format it and proofread it and post it. But I don't know if it would save enough time to justify that as, you know, like new position, or if we're at that point. Um, and I, so, yeah, maybe, I mean, I haven't really thought about this enough to think about what would be a good alternative to hiring someone to do that. Because I don't feel like we're necessarily at the point where we could justify another person, but maybe I don't know, like somebody or some sort of contract type position or something that that could help with that. Um, that's, that's the big thing I see is the, it's the communication stuff, because you know, as as hard as Janice and I try to keep up with everything, um yeah, it's just between the creating the content and the logistics of like posting it everywhere it needs to go and, you know, getting it in a format where it you know, it looks like a professional communication from the town, it is a lot of time. Um but I have to think more about, how do we do that in a way that's using the town's resources efficiently?
Right, I mean, sometimes it can be, it it can end up taking more time just to try to bring somebody up to speed. And we've definitely seen that, and so that's why a lot of the time it becomes easier just to, you know, have you do it. But I I think um I would like to see money available in the budget, so that if the opportunity arises or the person arises that could do that kind of stuff, you're kind of in a position where you can jump on that. And just because clearly we're gonna need more to accomplish that goal, we do need more resources. Um, and I don't want to mandate like, you're here, Audra, here's your gift of an intern, six thousand dollars, solve our communication problems. But is there a way to to add a little bit of money to this? Or Mason, Mason, you just sprayed me with it. Um, don't spray, especially not on my computer. Um, is there, or is that just a more appropriate use of the select board contingency, perhaps, when the if something like that?
Yeah, I think for the time now, the contingency would cover that, but I mean, I definitely agree with what you're saying, and I'd like to kind of try to figure out you know, ways that that we could do this. Um, just where that's gonna be a a helpful thing for everyone.
Okay, I I think that's a, that's a great idea, because um, you know, we we we're gonna be discussing the contingency thing later, just add to the list of potential, my list of potential demands and what happens when you're playing with contingency, so. But good comment, are there any other comments on um the, just um the the budget for um for admin? Allison?
Um, the camera operator. Um, I'm wondering if we do end up going back to um some kind of a hybrid form of I mean, I really don't want to, just to put that out there, I think this is working better for a lot of people, um including me. But if we do end up going back to meeting in the conference room, there's now this there's a large demand for it all so to be um, you know, online and on Zoom and all those things, and so I think the need for having an actual person in the room is gonna increase, um at least temporarily and not decrease. So looking at like the actuals for two thousand twenty, I think, um obviously FY twenty one, we didn't use very much, but it seems like we should probably, in my mind, we should probably double that budget for FY twenty two, just in case, for the ca- camera operator, transcriber, camera operator.
And how much is it, we have zero in there now?
No, we have forty five hundred, but that's less than we spent in FY twenty.
Mm hmm.
And um.
What are you proposing?
To double it.
I don't have a problem with that. Well, I mean, one of the things we've got to think about as we go down through this thing is is the conference room and bring it in into the twentieth century and someday the twenty first century, but um um just um
Oh, and not, Janice says that includes our secretary, not just camera operator. So that's the minutes.
Oh.
So that should be, we should probably change, um or maybe I'm just not reading carefully. Enough, I mean, regardless.
Okay.
We sometimes have trouble getting people to do that job, um it's a hard job, I just think we need probably more money in there. And maybe if that fits into some of our code, does that, does some of the COVID emergency money allow us? I don't, probably not in the future, if the.
I mean, probably not for, you know, this line and what it pays for specifically, but I do think that the setting up some sort of hybrid meeting, like a true hybrid meeting room.
Yep.
Definitely.
Yep. Yeah, I mean, maybe all part of that, you got those question I had later in the budget about where's money for that? Uh I think it may be buried in there, but that's, that's, that's where I see this subject coming to, but so I, I think I'm I'm paying attention to this a lot, this this issue. Um uh as we finalize the budget, we can certainly look at increasing that wherever the monies are for the conference room and the camera supporter and all those pieces that go with it.
I mean, all of that is part of the communications, how well thing, you know, how easy things are to view online and all of that stuff, it requires, there's, there's no really good system that doesn't require people um kind of doing stuff, and so I think we just need to put more money everywhere that's appropriate there. I think we've really heard that from people that they.
Okay.
They want it.
I'm taking a note of it, we can certainly address it um when we finalize this budget.
So do we want to deal with it, with, do we want to change anything in the actual line item here, or?
Um, I, other, I would like to hear from the other, those select board members.
I, I think, I I think Allison has a really good idea, and especially is it's gonna be more complicated, because, you know, people at some point will have to coordinate, not just running the cameras, switching them back and forth in the room, but coordinating with Zoom and wherever else people are.
I, I.
That's the new world.
Yep, Taylor, any input?
Uh, makes sense to me, my only question is whether or not it there's so much unknown to it, I guess, um whether or not it just makes more sense to have money sort of earmarked in a, in the contingency for that, or whether we actually want to align items specifically for this or part of the line.
Audra, let me ask you this, the the conference room issue we've discussed many times, we even put some monies at one point aside for bringing, as I jokingly said, but seriously said, bringing it into the twentieth century and later into the twenty first century um as a true meeting room, and that's this, do we have something in the budget now with that? And and is this the place to put an increase in, or or do we need to create a line for the conference room period, including this?
So there's a bunch of different options, I I don't think it would necessarily be this line, but I think that Allison and Mark's point that it's you're not going to be hiring just a camera operator anymore, you're going to be hiring somebody to basically control all the IT associated with the meeting, because in addition to running the cameras, like Mark was saying, they're gonna be switching back and forth between Zoom. Um, you know, the the whole input into the mixer and and all the audio and all, you know, it just becomes a lot more complicated when you switch to a hybrid meeting system. So, you know, I think adding more to that line would probably be wise, given that, you know, it's gonna be probably more screening.
Yeah.
Um, you know, just everything that that's gonna entail, it's, it is without a doubt gonna be more complicated than it ever has in the past.
In your, in your mind, doubling it would be the a good way to go, Audra?
Yeah, I mean, I can't, I can't speak to how much you'd want to put in it, but definitely, you know, not not budgeting based on what we've done in the past is smart, and I think that the actual you know, improvements that you want to make to the room, um
Yeah.
we can address those in other areas of the budget, you've got a variety of options for how you could it could be reserves, it could be contingency, it could be a CIP.
Okay.
A lot of choices.
Mark?
Um, Janice just posted that thirty two hundred dollars of the forty five hundred is is for a transcriber. Um, so that doesn't leave much, I would, I would suggest maybe even going up to fifteen thousand to uh that that would more than cover it, um because it's gonna be a a a different kind of job for a a, you know, a a technical oriented person.
All right, I would agree, uh let's, let's, let's plan on bringing that forty five hundred to fifteen.
Yeah, definitely, I mean, we already overspent it before.
Yes, very, very true, and that, but good point, Mark, thanks for bringing that up. Okay, uh any other comments on administration and finance? Then we'll move on to um professional services. Which I believe is no difference between the budget committee and town manager and department head, not that there is one, that's Audra again.
All right, so I will get into the why behind this later, um
Okay.
You're just gonna have to trust me for now. For general legal, um and this bottom line, it's going to be the same as what was proposed by me originally and what was proposed by the budget committee.
Yeah, Audra, you bring it up on the screen, please.
Uh, sorry. So under the um, the general uh legal, I would propose that you put seventy thousand four hundred and fourteen there.
Seventy thousand seven fourteen?
Yep, seventy thousand four hundred and fourteen dollars, and then Euro out the wages, Medicare um retirement and health insurance. And then on the revenue side, you zero out the um Belfast.
Okay.
Reimbursement. And the, and the idea is that um instead of Bill being a full-time employee, he'll be contract legal counsel. So we'll get the exact same service from Bill, the same amount of days. Um, we'll just change the way that we compensate him.
Is is his benefits being eliminated?
They're gonna, they're gonna be rolled into that seventy thousand and he'll, he'll um do whatever he does in his, you know, with his practice.
Is it, are his benefits through Camden?
They are now.
Okay.
But he would, yeah.
But they won't be.
This change will maintain the bottom line of two forty one eight?
Yes, so it'll be that, that seventy thousand four hundred and fourteen, that's the same amount that we pay him now, if you you know, you subtract the um, the revenues from expenses. It's just a different method of paying for Bill's services, but we'll get the exact same type of stuff we're getting now.
Which is basically one third of the standard.
Yes.
Okay.
And like I, I, um, I'm, it's not my story to tell right now, um.
Okay, all right, um, are there any other comments from the select board members on this budget?
I'm fine with what Audra suggests.
Allison?
Can, can you just help me understand um the type of engineering professional services? Um, it seems like we do a lot more than that every year. But I know that some of it's tied up into other budgets. Um, I want to just make sure that we have enough money for all the things the town needs to do.
Yeah, so a lot of, you know, when we have sort of like a project-based engineering, like, you know, um uh like when we uh redid the parking lots and we had engineering services associated with that, that was sort of bundled into the cost of the project, um you know, sort of like ten to fifteen percent is budgeted in those projects for engineering. And um the Public Works Department, they have an engineering budget, um in case you know, Dave runs into any sort of like, you know, issues when he's trying to make a repair, do a project. Uh, you know, that kind of thing, this is sort of the generalized um engineering professional services, so it kind of it encompasses both, there might be like a you know, like a little project that we want to do, like, we would, um, for example, last year, we did the EMS study with Rockport and Penn Bay Medical Center, we um the, um, I forget what, what another, the the uh, when we originally committed to doing the broadband study, which we never ended up doing, because they went in a different direction, but that money would have come out of this line, things, things like that.
What about like the parking study, if we're gonna do a parking study?
So the parking study, um, it could come, I'm guessing it's gonna be more than eighteen thousand dollars. It'll probably end up being somewhere between twenty and thirty. Um, and that was sort of a conversation I was gonna have with you about contingency. Um, but you could certainly, you know, you could certainly budget for it in this line as well.
I mean, I think we should just, if we, in the cases where we know that we might want to do something, it would be better not to leave it up to the contingency for this year. it would be better not to leave it up to the contingency for this year. Um.
Well, we're, we're, we've, on occasion, we've, we've, um, used funds for, when you mentioned broadband, Audrey, when we approved the recent increase in the broadband study costs, as I recall, that came out of contingency. Because there wasn't enough money in this line item to be able to do that.
If I can just add something real quick on this line, um, we did carry 72,000 from FY20 into FY21. So we really do have a balance of about 67,000 in that
Oh.
line. So.
Oh.
Yeah, we're. We're good.
Okay. So hold, wow. Okay. But that would assume that we're going to carry forward the balance.
And spend, yeah.
Oh, wow. Um, we can do all kinds of stuff, huh?
Yeah. Well, that's, that's important to know because that's, that 18,000 doesn't cover much.
Right. That's what I was thinking.
Yeah, it's kind of strange year, like money that we usually spent because we're doing certain projects. We were, you know, like all spring and summer, we were doing COVID-related stuff. So that kind of took focus away from other things that we'd normally be doing at the same time. So there's, there's going to be some areas like this where, you know, we're not spending the same way that we usually do.
Well, that, that changes the light. Thank you, Jordan.
So if we carry forward a balance of $72,000 and we've spent $4,000 to date, why can we budgeted 18, then why do we have 68 in there?
That was as of February. We have spent in that line, um, 22,000. So we have about a $67,000 balance right now.
Right.
Oh. And what, what have we spent it on this year?
Let me just, I'll pull that up.
It doesn't really, it's okay. Um, sounds like we have enough.
Yeah, but 67,000 certainly do. Um, and, but it comes into my thinking when we talk about contingency because we've been drawing down from certain, you know, professional services for technical, but the, the word engineering throws you off a little bit because it, 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 it's a question of why are we segregating engineering professional services from architectural professional services from, you know?
Yeah, it says it like that in, in the spreadsheet, but if, and like in the list, but if you go down to the explanation, it's called engineering and professional services, which kind of changes the.
That does, that does.
So if we, I think we should just correct it up in the.
Yep.
Put the and in, and it just changes it quite a bit.
Good, okay. But I would think with 67,000, I feel that's, 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 well, well, adequate, but we might need in addition to everything else.
Yes.
That would be a perfect thing for the parking study, probably.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Any other comments, board? Um, if not, we'll move on to the, with Audrey's corrections, staying at same total to, uh, let's see, next would be, um, I believe, uh, 0103, planning code enforcement, community development and stuff. Where again, the budget committee and the select board, I'm sorry, and the town managers has the same number, 475075 or FY22, a slight, um, well, actually a large increase from the actuals of FY21.
Why are we so underspent there?
I think a lot of that had to do with, um, Steve leaving and not having a code enforcement officer for.
Yes.
Yes, that's why.
Well, I think the code enforcement officer, I can't really see what $15,000 for the snowball is going to make that big a difference, but, um, he cruises to pay.
Wait, no, 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 no. I'm talking about Steve.
Code's officer.
Wilson.
Okay. Yeah, code officer would, would, would definitely make a change in, um, and, um, and full-time wages for sure. And FY21 is not over yet, so we still have, um, what, four months? April, May, June, three months.
What are community projects versus, I don't know, probably says it versus com-.
Yeah.
Community projects. Is that fireworks?
Yeah, it could be anything. Yeah, okay. That was one of the things that it was spent on in the past.
Yeah.
So it was when, you know, um, connect over coffee was one thing, fireworks, um.
Right.
Pretty much.
Right.
Uh, Christmas by the sea related expenses, um, businesses blooming. It kind of came out of the, you know, the, um, recent history around, um, oh gosh, what was it called? I'm forgetting what it's called already. The, the Camden Downtown Network Board.
Oh, yeah.
Using around them versus CDAC and Cabbage agreeing to pick up some of those, um, events and projects and that money being set aside for that purpose.
Okay. All right. Any other comments, board?
Yeah. Just in general, um, it seems that there and maybe it's because we've been understaffed and that's reflected in the under spending there, but it seems like there's a level of being overwhelmed in, in that office. Um.
I would agree. So, you know, when Alison, you were talking about additional staff in the administration and finance budget. I came to mind was that, um, of all the departments where staffing truly feels like it's a challenge and there's like a real crunch, it's this department. And I know that, um, you know, Jeremy's position was like a huge change and bringing that in was seen as like a big, uh, you know, like improvement over what was done in the past, but it's still, that office has just been so historically understaffed for what they need to do and what's expected of them. Um, that I really, I don't know if this is going to be the budget where we tackle that problem, but I really do think we all need to start kind of looking at, uh, not, it's not so much the assessing piece of this, but it's definitely the planning codes and development and how that all works and whether or not, given what we have for work and expectation around what the work is, is it sufficient?
Well, Audrey, can it, is this, is this a future planning thing or do we want to address it here and increase something here now?
Well, I do have some suggestions that fit within the IT budget that could alleviate some of these problems, but they're not going to fix them completely.
Okay.
Well, I think it fixes anything completely, but.
But that's on the cheap, right?
Trying to sort of like, uh, you know, digital, like make the way that they do things more efficient by digitizing our licensing permitting system.
Right.
Um, you know, there's, there's a few things that I think that we've got quotes on, you know, software that could help out with this and streamline things quite a bit, but that's only going to provide a little bit of relief. I don't think it's going to address the whole problem into the future.
One second, Alison. I want to see if Mark or Taylor have any comments in this one.
Well, one, one of the things I'm aware of is the planning office, Jeanie is not a full-time employee, right? She, she works.
30 hours.
30 hours, right. So, so they're under the gun there. I mean, she's amazing, um, but she's not there all the time, which is obviously a hardship. Um, but do you have these IT things, uh, in other parts of the budget so they can be a part, they can move forward pretty quickly?
I don't have them in the budget. I've got what they're going to cost and I was going to talk to you about it when we get to the IT budget and I'll explain them all. There's one of them you've already, you've already.
We talked about it the last meeting.
Yeah, yeah.
Is this, will this help? Uh, will this be a substantial help this year, um, while we wait to talk about staffing?
I think like with any new system, it's going to be, you know, there's going to be a change and it's going to be a lot of work to get them onto a new system and that's going to be stressful. Um, but I think that afterwards it'll alleviate a lot of the, well, some of, it'll alleviate some of the issues, but one of the things I don't think it's going to fix is the, the, the biggest tension I see is with Jeremy's position and what he fo-, you know, what he focuses his time on, things like, you know, ordinance amendments and, and that whole process. It's very, very time consuming. Um, because, and it's not the writing of them, it's the back and forth around changing them and negotiate, you know, all the public hearings and input and different, you know, different committees, the select board. Um, you know, that takes a lot of time. And then all the development projects that we have and, and expectations around progressing that work.
Mm-hmm.
You know, it.
Let me just finish the question. So if we, if we're going to budget for a new person, it's not, it's, it's going to be a, a, a pretty substantial job. So it's going to be a strong, a, a, a larger budget than it's not just going to be a support person.
Right.
Exactly. Yeah. I mean, a support person is not going to alleviate some of the problems in that office. It's going to have to be somebody with either planning or development skills.
Yeah, yeah. Alison?
Right. And, and all this, you know, IT stuff is well and good, but it's, as you know, better than anybody, it's going to take people that understand the system already and we, we're really understaffed in that area when you compare like other towns that would have, you know, somebody on staff that can do GIS stuff, that can make maps, that can, um, there's a, it just feels like a huge amount is being asked of Jeremy in terms of just all of the stuff around the issues that end, everything from issues that ends are having to like the big existential questions of planning for sea level rise. And I've, I've found myself, you know, we were all, as soon as Jeremy came on, we were like, oh, great. Now we have a town planner. We have somebody to to send like every single inquiry to. And that's what we all, I think, started doing. Oh, just talk to Jeremy. He coordinates everything. And we have to, we have to be realistic about what, what people can do. And so, um, I'd really like to see more. And I know it takes energy too, just to bring somebody on and figure out how that would work. But I just want to strongly voice my support for more funding in that area and maybe to find the right person that could do some of the, the planning stuff. I mean, the communication stuff too. Um.
Audrey, one, uh, we're not going to solve the problem at this meeting. Why don't you, would you like to go back and take these comments and, and bring us something back next Tuesday night?
Yes, I can, I can certainly do that, but I guess, uh, you know, what we might want to consider is some sort of arrangement with an organization like McEd where they, they do like, um, contract planning services for Rockport. Um, they did it for Thomaston for a while before Thomaston got sort of big enough that they needed their own person. They do Waldeboro. So maybe it's some sort of arrangement like that where we have, you know, like contract services above and beyond what we get from being a member. And we get somebody, you know, somebody's time for a few hours a week.
How is that going to help us implement something like on an online permitting system?
It's not going to help with that, but it would be more of like if we had a specific development project or projects or planning projects that we wanted to work on. I think the online, the online permitting system.
I don't know. That might be, that might not. I'm, that was just an example, but, um.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, any of those sort of like, ah, it's almost like you, it, it's the same with the website. It's almost like you just have to grit your teeth and deal with the huge influx of work to get you onto that new system.
Yeah.
Um, I, I just, I don't see any better way of like, you know, transitioning everyone over than just accepting the fact that it's going to be stressful and a lot of work for a short period of time. Once you get on, hopefully things improve.
Mark?
Uh, Audrey, as Bob said, why don't you bring us a couple of different options about, um, maybe a McEd, maybe a person, maybe, uh, some sort of bridge to help that transition
Yep.
situation be better. Why don't you see what sort of options you can come up? And unfortunately it's next Tuesday, but that would be good because.
She can always, she can always, um, pop an email to us during the week for consideration and we'll just bring it to the table on Tuesday night.
Yes. And, and Jeremy and I need to have a conversation about this and how it would work and what areas would be most effective.
Yep, I would agree.
Planning board minutes, I just want to throw that in. Things like that. There's just so much stuff that doesn't quite, is always on the cusp of not getting done. Um.
Yep. Well, there's a backlog of permits and all kinds of stuff, filing and this stuff that has to be done too. So this, Audrey, you can meet with that whole gang and see what makes sense and get back to us, please. Onto IT budget, IT budget. Again, there's a, uh, town manager from the budget committee or the same, um, and department has the same recommendation at 97,380. Audrey, you said you had some recommendations here already. You want to talk to those first?
Yeah. So we already talked about the, um, general code. Um, I think it wouldn't hurt just to get us used to this expense because it's going to be a yearly expense, adding to the, um, licensing streaming domain, the, um, $1,195 per year for a subscription. So, you know, we can easily cover the, that initial $11,000 cost of, um, you know, getting us set up in, uh, Ecode 360. But I, I do think that having that yearly, um, licensing cost is a, is a good thing to budget for in this budget. Um.
Is that suggested for 39,000, go up to about 41,000?
Yeah, but I'm not done with that line yet. So.
Okay, sorry.
Yes, there's that one. Um, and behind the scenes with Janice and keeping on those businesses um, to make sure that they have, she basically does that for them. Um, there are very few towns I know that, you know, you have a member of the staff saying to them, hey, you need to renew your liquor license. You need to, you know, that's a, that's a huge service to them that Janice has been providing. Doing it through the most sort of like rudimentary of systems, um, that she's developed all on her own. So I do think, you know, adding that to this would be a huge help to her and it would be great if she ever wants to take a vacation. Um.
Right.
Anyway, uh, the cost.
Wait, wait, you're, you're asking, you want to allow Janice to take a vacation?
I think she'd appreciate it at some point.
What's the, what's the total cost of that, Audrey?
So the, we've only got one system that's been quoted up. Um, I think there might be alternatives that are cheaper, but I thought this is just a good placeholder. So it would be about 6,700 per year for the licensing. And then to get us set up within the system is about $4,500.
So it's about $12,000, something like that.
Totally, yes. Yeah.
I'm totally in favor of that.
Is that the end of your list in this category right now?
It is not.
Okay.
Okay. So another thing, but this one, you'll like this one because it has offsetting revenue. Um, I think that we need to be prepared in the event that the, um, short-term rental registration ordinance passes. We should have a system in place where we're able to, um, manage that and the cost of software to do that will be about $10,000.
Mm-hmm.
I would, and that's a yearly cost, but I would recommend that through, if, you know, given the projected number of STRs that we have now, a $50 registration fee would offset the cost of that software.
So you're, you're proposing a $10,000 revenue, a $10,000 cost here?
Correct.
All right.
That's fair.
Is that the end of your list?
That's the end of my list.
So just to summarize, what I'm seeing is, um, and for one package, there was two components that had to mark 12, mission 12,000 plus about 1,100 for the first license, uh, for the first software, right? You said $1,100?
Uh, uh, 1,195. So we could look at the 12.
So 1,200 plus 12,000 is a $14,000 increase offset and the, the 10,000 additional is offset by 10,000 in revenue, correct?
Yes.
The net effect of the budget is an addition of 14,000.
Correct.
All right. Any other comments, board, on that action?
Oh. Um, tangentially related, but I'm supportive.
Okay, all right.
I, I am as well.
Really, okay. Um, we're not voting here, but, uh, well, let's just get it into the package. We'll vote it on next Tuesday. I just do want to sound like we're voting, that's all. But, um, yeah, I'm supportive also. Um, basically, again, 14.
Jody. Um, Jody, in that line, it would be roughly an additional 25,000. To be more precise, it'd be about 24,400.
Okay.
I have about 61,495 going in that line.
That's, okay.
How, how do we go from 39 to 61?
Add, if you add all that, um, software that I talked about, that's, uh, 24,400.
All right. And then alternate, and then in parallel, there'll be a $10,000 revenue item shown in the revenue sheet when we get to that.
Correct.
You got a, you got a comment, Alison?
Um, yeah, in the mapping GIS and. Um, yeah, in the mapping GIS and assessing, um, this is something I've spoken with Audra a little bit about, but, um, we're, it's another area where we spend a lot less than many other towns that, um, are doing the types of things that we wish to do. Um, one of those, you know, there, there's sort of a laundry list of, um, things that we've chosen not to do in order to save money. One of, one example is that we only update our property database once a year, you know, the online property database. So when we send out notices to a butters, um, all that kind of stuff, it's based on whoever owned the property, I think April first or something like that. Um, that's, you know, because we've tried to save ourselves a one-time fee of nineteen hundred dollars to have it updated um, nightly. Um, there's just basically a bunch of, of things that we should be taking advantage of, like tying in our, this permitting system that Audrey's talking about. Many towns have that linked to their assessing database. Um, there's, um, I, I don't want to get into the minutia of it, but we should be spending more there. Um.
Again, that was much Audra to, you know, to evaluate this further, um, see what we can do to come into the twentieth century. And, and bring back recommendation either now or, or at a future date.
Yeah. I mean, I guess just to echo Allison, there's just a lot of, I think, capability, and it's not just in the planning and assessing areas. It's all across the town.
Yeah.
It would just be a huge benefit if we had it. And also it could be hugely beneficial to the public if we're more able to make the data that we have publicly available.
What do you recommend? This is an area we obviously, I'm sure we need to pay attention to. What do you recommend? Study or, or?
Um, I don't, I don't think we need a study. I've got, I've got a few quotes. I don't remember exactly what they are. Do you remember, Allison, what the quotes were for? Um, gee.
I mean, well, a lot of that can be hourly. Um, there's I, I would say doubling that budget would be a good thing to do, but not all of that would need to continue on a yearly basis. Um.
I think before we go, from my perspective, what's your second word, comment, Mark or Taylor? Um, yeah, I, I think we seem to be trying to cook something we don't have, I don't feel a definition to yet, but Mark and Taylor, I want to hear your opinions.
Um, I, I, I think we wait for, um, I, I think we wait for Audrey to really finish.
Yeah.
What, you know, figuring out what we exactly we need.
Yeah. I guess just with this one, it's not, it wouldn't be committing to, um, like a yearly, you know, like a year-over-year increase. It's more of like a push to get, um, you know, some data or mapping done that we're going to have in perpetuity. And we don't have to do it all this year. We can sort of like, you know, piece by piece.
All right.
You know, but we can bring you sort of like a list of all the different, um, you know, areas that we've, we've had recommendations for, and we can sort of pick what the strategy is for this year versus next.
Yeah. Yeah, I like that approach.
Okay. I, I was going to say the, the one thing that I think is important is we try to get totally into the twenty-first century and use whatever tools are available to save our people for what they're best suited for.
Yeah. I mean, just to give you another example, like that's, for example, that story map that was done, that showed sea level rise in Camden. That was all done with, with GIS mapping data. For her to get that information is an incredibly cumbersome process that involves multiple staff, people and you know, transferring data. Most towns would have all of that data that we already have about zoning and properties. That would be in a, in an online hub. And anybody could download that to be able to turn, you know, our information into really valuable planning tools. But we're slowing ourselves down a lot in the types of things that we can be involved in because of our clunky system. So.
Well, and in, in your evaluation, Audra, I think part of it, we discussed earlier about staff time and these, every time you add something like this, it takes some staff time. So from your perspective, we need, I think the board needs to hear what you're recommending. Great. And, and how it should be phased in.
Yeah. And I guess the good thing about, um, the mapping and the GIS expanding those capabilities, um, it's not, you know, it's not the same staff that would, you know, have to be involved in, in that part. So.
All right. Well, once you come back and recommend, recommend what you think we might want to contemplate going forward.
Yeah, I'll have, and it'll be a multi-year.
Yeah, that, that's fine. That, that's exactly what we need. Um, unless we got a bunch more to cover. Let's keep going into insurances. Any comments more on insurances? On the.
I got nothing special about this one.
Yeah, nothing's changed. It looks like except for the increase from FY twenty-one, which is really based on general liability. And, um, workers' comp insurance, which is taking a, a big increase. And I'm sorry, it hasn't. It's taken a, no, it's not. It's not. It's not that much of an increase. I'm sorry. All right. Um.
All good.
Okay.
So, um, the Opera House slash Town Office Building.
Yeah.
Um, this is really sort of decreasing because of, um, you know, wages. So moving from a full-time person to a part-time person.
Mm-hmm.
And I think that we're all, um, pretty comfortable with that, particularly for the time being.
I guess, yeah. Why is the department head health insurance so much different from yours?
Um, my guess is when, uh, so, yeah, when that was originally budgeted, um, it was kind of based on a full-time person.
That's what I figured.
Yeah. Am I, am I right, Jody?
Uh, um, I need to look at that because, actually, no, you're right. Um, yeah. So that line just only has our technical director in it and it's, it, it pays for, um, a twenty-five percent of her health insurance.
That's why it dropped to thirty-six hundred?
Right. Because when it was originally budgeted for, it was that thirty-six hundred plus, um, the health insurance for a full-time custodian. Or seventy, was it seventy-five percent of a full-time?
So the custodian is funded at fifty, was funded at fifty percent for the health insurance. So that no longer is in that budget. So it's, it's twenty-five percent of a single, um, and for our technical director.
I see. All right.
Bob?
Yes, Mark?
Are we going to go back to a full-time custodian at any point?
I don't think that we're anticipating it for this year, given just the COVID restrictions, you know, so even when we are able to return to live shows, um, I don't think we're foreseeing it's going to be sort of like a packed-out opera house.
Okay.
Like it wasn't past. So.
So it's something maybe we'll look at next year.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. So on to the Opera House Auditorium.
Question here is here where we have, uh, um, maybe the, the equipment needs for the conference room to, to increase it so we can do the full technical support for meetings, twenty-first century meetings when we're back in there.
I wouldn't say that would go in this budget. Um, oh, well.
It could.
So there, there is a proposal for cameras that would, um, you know, allow us to sort of livestream from the Opera House like in a more sophisticated way than we're doing now. Um, but I was going to sort of come to you with some ideas on how we could do that.
It, it was, it was quite a chunk of change for the sound and the video.
Yeah.
It was, you know, tens of thousands, not single thousands, right?
Yes.
So you're proposing to discuss this in another budget line item?
Yeah.
Okay.
Because it seems more of like a capital.
Okay.
Expense.
Yeah, that, that's fine. As long as we, like to Mark's point, a lot of the, I think we should cover it someplace, but.
Okay.
Um, again, the, the big drop, um, from department head to you and full-time wages. Is this that part-time person again? And it, and just shifting around?
Yeah, because fifty percent of their, um, salary and, or wages and benefits sit within this budget. Yeah.
Yeah. And the part-time went up, so you can see it there.
Yep, yep, yep. Did. All right.
Cool.
All right. Um, the police department. Again, there's no difference between budget committee and, um, and town manager. And department head.
Any comments?
Anybody?
I'm looking.
Yes. Okay. Okay. It's not much of an increase over FY twenty-one budget, about twenty-four thousand dollars uh, from FY twenty-one. And like I said, um, apartment head, town manager, budget committee, I'll agree. I, I, I don't see anything in any of the lines that I would question at this point, but.
When does the, uh, when does the police department union contract get renegotiated?
So we'll renegotiate it this year and then the, um, the new contract will start in FY twenty-three.
Okay.
So do we need a budget for, what is this union negotiations line?
That's, uh, if we get sort of like an outside, you know, negotiator to come help us.
Well, but it's zero.
Yeah. I, I mean, we didn't, last time we did the contract negotiations, it was just Randy, me.
Okay.
And you guys.
Okay.
Hmm. We would be using bill if, um, if we were to require legal.
Right, right. But that costs is elsewhere.
Yep.
All right.
Well. I always like to make a push for fewer cars and more bicycles, but I don't know. I guess that's just the, I, I think, you know, I say this all the time, but we discuss the actual, you know, job priorities of the police department, less than anything else that gets discussed in town. It's one of our largest budgets and we have virtually no discussion ever about, um, you know, priorities and, and that's not to say that, I, I mean, I think they're really doing an awesome job and can point to many different examples of, of positive things, but, um, I think it's maybe even, you know, be, because of that and because of the really pretty darn good team of people that we have working for the town. It would just be beneficial to everybody to have more interaction about how, you know, the police department eyes mostly sort of out in the community can dovetail with some of the town goals. I would imagine it's a really difficult job for them to decide kind of what to focus on a lot of the time. Um, and, and I would just like to see more interaction between the general public and the police department, because I think there's, since we do have a really good department, it's a really great opportunity to kind of use that as an, an outreach tool to improve like society in general. Um, and that just everybody would benefit from more interaction. And I don't know how that would look or how it to be reflected in the budget, but, um.
Well, it's obviously not going to be reflected in the budget now, but you're suggesting a forum for the future that can be considered in select work policy, especially with this like board coming new in, uh, in July first. Um, but that was, yeah, that's, but that's what I'm hearing a suggestion, but to this, this budget, I guess it's not going to affect what we're doing right now for this budget.
I don't know if they would need any more money to do anything. Um, I had heard Randy said one time before that they used, because we used to have bicycles. Um, and I think I heard that the training needed got really expensive. Um, that's one question that comes up to me a lot. Why don't we have people on bicycles?
Right.
Anymore. I don't know if that's
Right.
an appropriate question to ask today or?
Mark or, or Taylor, you have any comment?
No, it's, it's, it looks, i- i- I was going to say, I, I went through the whole budget. It looks very, um, very supportive. Uh, there's no big bumps. There's no, it's been very steady over the years. Um, and looks well-run, well-put-together, and it works well.
Taylor? Uh, yep, agreed. I think Randy's presentation at the budget committee was good and their questions were adequate. So I'm comfortable.
Well, good questions. I think we should look to the future. Um, but as we are right now, like Randy, I hope, Audrey, if he wanted to consider some of these programs, he would have brought to the budget to your recommendations. And we really should have him think about that more seriously in the future to make recommendations if he has some.
Yeah. And I mean, I'm sure he'd be happy to talk about bikes.
Yeah. I think it's a good idea. I think it's a good idea. Open, open discussion. I call it forum. But, um, open discussion on the pros and cons and how, how it could be used in this system. With, with that, let's move on to county dispatch.
Or horses or dogs or, you know.
Yep.
I'd be supportive of all those things.
Yep.
So, um, I'm guessing nobody has any question, comments.
Like banging against the wall.
I'm totally opposed. I don't like the way the system works. I liked it before when you could just call down to the, to our own office. I know it cost us more. I think it's terrible now. Um.
Yep. Oh, all right. Um, any other comments, uh, on, uh, that one? No. I'll move on to public safety, which is our fire department, basically.
All right. So, um, a lot of this is sort of, you know, kind of shifting around, um, you know, higher, higher full-time wages, uh, really, that's just kind of like the pay adjustment. The part, uh, more sort of in part-time wages and less in call, um, firefighters payroll. So those are some, like, really the big changes.
I see. Well, the full-time wages has not gone up uh, from FY twenty-one. The big changes are, well, the, like I see are, well, let's see, eleven thousand for small department equipment. Um, I'm trying to see where, uh, it's, 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 there's only a, a, a forty-three thousand dollar increase from twenty-one to twenty-two that I'm seeing. And that's mostly, like I said, the small department equipment. Um, and a few of the miscellaneous accounts are a couple of thousand each. It's nothing huge that I see. Am I wrong?
You're not. No.
Okay. And the salaries are a portion of that, which is thirteen thousand. So any comments, board?
Yeah, just, just one point. Um, as Audra mentioned, uh, more part-time wages overtime as the call firefighters decreases. And that's because, um, it's harder to get volunteers and we need to make sure we have enough staff on to, to protect us. And it's, it's a, it's a change is happening countrywide, you know, so I'm glad we're on top of it and, uh, we have people that are, are here to work for us.
Right.
I think, I think a big part of that is the planning for phasing, um,
Mm-hmm.
the department into starting to do EMS and that the part-time wages will, um, be the beginning of covering that, um, as they'll be responding to more calls.
Yep. All right. Let's move on to public safety building, Audra.
So nothing too terribly exciting with this. Um.
Feel like question, Audra, what about the maintenance line? Isn't that going to change?
It will, but given that it's kind of un, unknown at this point, um, this is again, the whole year one of the Siemens contract, all of, all of those sorts of lines, the HVAC maintenance across the entire um, organization as well as the electricity lines. Those are all going to change next year.
Right. And heat as well, correct?
Yes. Yep. Heat's another one.
This should be good.
Yeah. But I guess, given that we're, you know, this is what year one, we don't know exactly what it's going to look like. Um, we're going to have better information when we do our budget next year to be able to realize those savings and they're all guaranteed. So.
Yeah.
Well, I, I really want to wait until that. And that's kind of why we're using that offsetting, um, you know, uh, two hundred thousand dollars of surplus um, for the.
As long, as, as long as you feel confident we've covered their proposed service agreement for the next year. That's all I care about.
Yes, that too. Actually, that, that line, sorry to, to go back on that, that line won't change next year either, that HVAC maintenance line. Because it's going to be about the, you know, comparable to use Siemens for the actual maintenance as it is.
Okay.
But it's more of the heat and the electricity.
Any other comments, Ward, on this one, not seeing any, we'll go on to our next. Chunk, which would be hydrant assessment, my favorite.
Okay, I want to make a point with this line, so this, I don't want it to look like that's decreasing, that cost is decreasing. Cause it's actually not, I miscalculated and, and I got the um. Letter from Main Water saying that our rates were going up and the hydrant assessment rates were going up. And so I recalculated based on what they gave us and realized that I had made a mistake in the past. You know, the past FY twenty and twenty-one, so I just want to make that point publicly. Because I don't want to give anyone the impression that that number is going down because our water rates are going down.
Okay, so, but the two fifty-eight thousand is correct.
Yes, Jody, Jody double-checked my work, I did it right in front of her.
That's a good idea.
It was a team effort.
Good, alright.
Audrey, can we, just briefly, I think it came from the budget committee, but um. The thought process and perhaps the importance of why this is a separate item in the budget, um, being that it's um. Essentially a bill that would get a not part of an operational budget for the fire department.
Yeah, I mean, we, we sort of talked about this, there are kind of like a number of these where, um, you know, we separated them out. And I do think it's important that, uh, you know, the assessments are kind of separate from the um. You know, uh, sort of operational budgets, because they're, they're sort of expenses that we don't have any say in what's. What's levied to us and, you know, so, say we're going through the exercise of like trying to reduce a department's budget. I wouldn't want the rest of the department to suffer at the expense of a, an assessment that we don't really have any control over. How much we're charged for that. If that makes any sense to everyone, but I, yeah, and, and the reason, and there was some suggestion, well, why don't we just lump the assessments all together? At the end of the budget, um, because we don't really have any choice over them, so like, let's put them in the area where we're really showing that we don't have any control over these expenses. Thought about that, and the reason we don't do that, this is giving us the full picture of what we pay for public safety. Um, and the infrastructure around public safety, so things like the hydrant assessment and the um, call center dispatch fees. Those all contribute to our overall cost as a town for public safety. And so if we separated them out and put them at another place in the budget, you just wouldn't see that total cost all lumped together in one area. So that's, that's why we do it that way, and that's why, you know, I think it's kind of wise to keep it that way, but I do understand the point that. You know, things that we don't have any control over and it's really just a perfunctory vote.
Sounds good.
Read that too.
Alright, yeah, I'll see if you have a question.
We have um, some kind of a contract that could be reviewed with them, it's not clear to me whether is, is this per hydrant. What are their responsibilities for, um, do they have to make sure that the hydrant is. Operational, do they replace it if it gets damaged, who has the insurance, because I know it's for. You know, we, they're important for fire protection, obviously, but they, the water company uses them as an important part of their process too. That's how they flush the system. So. I, I guess, I know, I don't want to take up a lot of time, but I, I would love to see whatever document we have.
Sure. Sure, reasonable request.
We reduce the number of hydrant, you know, who, who, who goes around and looks to see, do we have more hydrants than we need, or, because that's a substantial amount of money. It'd be good.
You get that document out to us, Audrey, so we can take a look at it and know what it's about, it'd be a good idea.
Yeah, and, and quite honestly, I get requests for more hydrants all the time.
I'm sure.
From who?
Residents who would like to see a hydrant in their neighborhood, kind of like sidewalks or.
Let's move on to EMS, oh five oh seven, Audra.
Yep.
Which is again, yeah, um, um, increased slightly over twenty-one, but uh, department head, town manager and budget committee. All have the same amounts in here.
Yep, and this is all in line with the EMS study that was done, and I just want to make the point here that if you, if you were to combine this budget. With our fire department budget, and then you were to combine that with what the town of Rockport spends on fire and EMS. Um, we're looking at, you know, one point two million in expenses. And we don't have any sort of offsetting revenue, and if you were to look at the city of Rockland, they spend about two point one million on fire EMS. And they receive about a million in offsetting revenue, so I think that we're sort of getting to a point where. Um, you know, I don't think a fire-based EMS system from like a financial perspective, especially if it's across our two towns. It's not unfeasible, so I just wanted to make that point, not that we're gonna address it in this year's budget.
No, but we, but we need to address it, and we should be addressing in the months going forward, and, and putting more flesh in the bone of what you just said.
Right, and part of this is, these are all, you know, taking, taking recommendations from that report, and the next stage is another report that would. Address the fire piece, thus doing regional EMS is not financially viable, but combining them is.
Okay, um, sounds like a great, but I get, but Audrey, you need to, we just, we just. Involved the results of the study in that select board meeting where they talked about the feedback from the citizenry and in- in acceptance, but. This is another educational element that we should address in the future, Mark.
Audrey and I had a conversation about this last week, because I wanted to make sure we're continuing a conversation about it and. Talked about, you should have been comparing the numbers and, because the study we had looked about, what could we do in, in the next six months? And we're more interested in looking ahead, you know, a year, two years, three years, and so she's got some really good points. Um, and done some really good research about this, and I'm very, uh, very excited about the work she's done.
Good, let's move on to uh, streetlights, Audrey, quickly, uh, zero five ten, um, not a mega budget.
So, um, with this, it was anticipated that, um. You know, when we replaced all the streetlights across town, our electricity bill would decrease to about four thousand dollars a year. That hasn't, as you can see from the actuals to date in FY twenty-one, um, that didn't happen in the first year, a lot of that was a timing issue. Um, but I also want one year of actual data on what our uh, electricity consumption is for streetlights to feel comfortable. Projecting that that number is going to be significantly decreased, so that's why I'm proposing ten thousand dollars.
In this, in this line item, it is the, if the maintenance particular, does it reflect the um, the, the fixes that need to be made in the wiring? For the streetlights downtown?
So it says downtown streetlights, the description really should be changed to just streetlights, because it used to be that we just did the maintenance for the downtown. Streetlights, because CMP owned the rest of them, but now that we own all of them, that's the, the maintenance for our entire network.
But it's the downtown streetlights that have the wiring problem.
They're more, they're more likely to have a wiring, well, yes.
Who have a wiring problem?
There are lots of streetlight stuff, well, probably.
Well, the ones downtown that have seen, the, 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 the wiring boxes are need to be.
Actually, let's stop speculating and.
They all have problems.
Okay, alright, onward.
Wait, 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 I was gonna. I was gonna bring in the expert.
Where is? Well, kinda.
We can see his name.
Yeah, he's, he's unmuted.
Also, why is this in the public safety budget, when no, I never, Randy's never the one talking about streetlights, it's always public works.
That is, that is a good question.
I think this should be Randy's.
Yeah, there you go. Dave, talking about streetlights, you're probably.
Alright, alright, so we have two types of streetlights, we have um. Fifty-three Rome, which are the downtown ones, and we have two hundred eighty-three, which are the ubiqua. Uh, ones that are throughout the town that we just replaced, they're all LED now, let's talk about the decorative Rome lights, though those are gonna. Actually, fifty-three is gonna go up by three, because we're gonna be doing the ones in the alleyways, that'll be fifty-six. It probably wouldn't hurt to put a little bit extra in there for faulty Rome nodes, to replace those as it goes. And, and that's kind of something that, I'm glad you guys brought that up. Um, fortunately, they've been standing behind the ones that are faulted, but we're getting into the point where they're no longer probably gonna be of. Honoring that warranty on those, so it wouldn't hurt to heck carry just a little bit extra in there for faulty nodes. The second part is, I've talked about this with Ron Hartford, I don't know if you guys remember, but we always have. Wreath problems and streetlight problems when you get past Atlantic Street. And it's because there's a crossing right there at Atlantic Street with a bad wa- bad wiring. Um, and there's also some bad wiring, I think I showed you Bob when we were over on Atlantic Street. Um, so maybe, you know, just a little bit, a little bit of maybe contingency in that for wiring. Um, you know, if I was gonna guess, I'd say, uh, you know, maybe two to three thousand dollars. And that would take care of the downtown stuff. Um, in terms of the ubiqua, those are all under warranty and we shouldn't have any issue with those for the first five years, so that's my.
Still have about three thousand increase recovery.
I would just, just as a contingency on Rome nodes and um, and the wire. The wiring that we just realized, kind of after we did the budget, where I showed you Bob by the library.
Yeah, that was disappointing, um, so maybe, uh, so the eleven thousand six hundred increased by three thousand?
Yeah, that would be just a, you know, that would probably get us through and make all those connections so they're watertight. And that would give us a little bit of buffer if the nodes are bad.
Well, those, those connections have to be causing streetlight outages.
Well, you know, the streetlight, um, the Christmas tree kicks out, and then the, the wreaths kick out, and it's all because of that. I guess once upon a time, that was above ground. And then DNA didn't like the way it looked, so they buried it, but what happened was all the water and everything rushes into it. And the connections are all not watertight.
If the rest of the board agrees, you probably think about adding three thousand dollars to this line for this maintenance items.
I'm good.
Okay.
Yeah, and that's my fault for leaving that out, that's.
It, it probably could have been covered elsewhere, it's not a lot of money, Dave, but. My, 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 we're addressing where, where it counts, any other comments on streetlights, Allison?
Um, I'm just a little confused about the electricity situation, because I thought I had heard that. There was an issue with the way CMP was doing it, that they don't bill us per, like. Based on actual electricity use, that they bill us based per streetlight, and so we weren't gonna be able to realize. The, you know, the gains or the.
No, that, I mean, that's more specifically for the smart controls, we would, I mean, we would have an even better ROI. If they had separate tariffs for all streetlights based on the metered usage instead of just the um. You know, the, the number and the projected usage, that's how they do it now, um, and there is. Stuff into rulemaking, but when we had the um, you know, the uh, investment grade audit done by real term. It was all off that old way of levying tariffs, so. Uh, the electricity savings, I think, would be even better if they, they did it based on the smart meter reading and the actual usage. But that's a, it's a battle.
So they did, they, they do reduce it once they, once they know that we have LEDs, basically. That's what changes their predicted.
Exactly, so they'll say, okay, we have LEDs, we know they use this much, and we're, we're going to make the assumption that they're on for like. I don't know, eight hours a night, and then we're gonna bill you according to that, whereas, you know, like, there's, it's more, it's more fine-grained than that, because, you know. We turn some off a lot earlier than that, we dim some of them, you know, there's all kinds of things that we do that I think.
But are those me, are those actually separately metered?
They're not, well, that's what I'm saying, that's, they're not.
It's a problem in every town, in city in the country.
That's all, this is like a PUC rulemaking.
I get it.
Okay, um, and then what is, what, what traffic signals do we maintain?
I think it's only the one at the Hannaford, is that correct, Dave?
True, but we, we have the blinking light at stop and go, which we're, um, we're getting ready to. Um, we have to change the relay in that, because the light keeps on kicking out, and then the circuit breaker box, or the, um. The, the, yeah, the breaker box is being replaced, and I think we carried a little bit extra in for the circuit breaker. Um, and for the relay in that line item, when you compared it from last year, um, it should be a little higher.
But that, that's not a state, do- doesn't, the state doesn't maintain their own traffic signals, or how does that work?
So what happened, what I found out was, um, actually, it's funny, I just got a bill for replace, for fixing that. Um, which I got to send a crooker, because they had done some work in the parking lot at Hannaford and broke the loop. Um, and that kind of generated uh, some inquiry about who really owns that light, and apparently, once upon a time, talking with David Allen, that. Hannaford wanted a streetlight there, and then they gave it to the town, but it was never, never, I know, that was such a great gift. Right, so now we own that light, and it isn't a DOT light, and apparently, we really haven't have it, had too much, um. You know, need for fixing it, so it hasn't come up, but again, Randy and I kind of fought over that, and I lost again with that one, so um. Uh, we're, we're maintaining that light and any problems with it, and I think we, we had to have something done just recently, uh, so we have two lights. Fortunately, that's it.
So it seems like this just belong, have we all just decided as a town that this is a public works? Item, I mean, I know not that many people look at our budget and then like, oh, I guess I should get in touch with the public works department or the police department, based on where, how they have their budget organized. But it seems like we should just try to do it the right way, and if it's a public works thing, we should put it under public works.
We could call it public, public works, safety, just change the title, and put it in a different account when Jody gets a chance to do it.
I mean, just the broadheading of.
Yep, yep, public works. Alright, let's move on to uh, public works department, which is, uh, again, there's no differentiation from the. Department head to the budget committee, to the town manager, um, any comments on this department select board? Questions?
What, drug testing, do we drug test everybody or just public works employees?
Um, we only, people that have a CDL license are required by federal law to be, uh, put in, be in the pool for testing. So anybody that has a CDL license is required to have a.
Mark, Mark. I, I, I think it's a really boring budget, there's no, nothing outrageous or crazy about it, you know, it's so. I'm, I'm sort of bored, Dave, I'm sorry, it's just independable.
Well, something's come up since, since um. Budget reviewed this.
Oh, there we go.
I'll let Audra kind of explain it.
Audrey, go for it.
Wait, 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 I forgot what, you're gonna have to remind me.
Okay, alright, so, so we started.
Can't be that interesting.
More that big.
It's a story about the Lorax.
Oh, yes, okay, um, that, that wasn't, that, yeah, that wouldn't go in here.
Yeah, that's the next one.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay, yeah, you're right.
Dave, keep, catch up, will you?
Keep your powder dry, Dave.
Let's, let's move on to the next one then, which would be the public works, streets, highways, bridges, and sidewalks.
Actually, it wouldn't even be this one.
Alright, but let's, let's, let's cover this one, this is um, again, similar situation between the three. Um, line items for the budget at four hundred and three thousand, any comments, questions for, or, go ahead, Allison.
Sidewalks, it seems like everybody, with the, one of the, some of the feedback that we continually get every single year. Is that we want more sidewalks, or that we want to maintain our sidewalks better, the select board has had many rounds of. Even attempting to put more money in the budget, um, and then it just doesn't get spent in the side, sometimes in the sidewalk. Area, um, looking at the, the FY twenty actuals is a particularly funny example of us trying to be proactive and. Saying, let's put some money in there, and then one thousand dollars, you know, sixteen hundred dollars of the twenty thousand got spent, um. Could we do more in terms of sidewalks, we see, we keep budgeting the same. Even though people tell us that they want better sidewalks, we keep saying we want people to walk more. Be a less car-centric place, like, how can, how can we do that, can we, do you need more money?
Um, well. Um, well, we, we did Park Street sidewalk last year. And I'll kind of, I'll give you a, I'll give you a handle on, so the cost of that was um, forty two thousand dollars to build that sidewalk.
It already had a sidewalk though, but.
Well, to, because the curb was gone and, um, so to redo that, just, just make believe we rip, we put in a new sidewalk. Um, that would be like forty, forty two thousand dollars. It's thirty eight cents a foot. Um, that's, that's, um, you know, a little over a thousand feet long. So the budget at twenty thousand dollars doesn't really do a lot for building a whole sidewalk. So that's.
Hold on, how do we pay for that then?
So, so part of that came out of the overall paving um, and street paving project because it got wrapped into that part of the project. So, we, so it's kind of misleading that to say we didn't spend anything on sidewalks. Because the sidewalk with the road at the same time.
Right. Mark, go ahead.
Uh, Dave, one curiosity, obviously, the, the sidewalk came out of the street paving. Street paving, uh, was way over budget and you may have covered it in meetings and I missed it. Um, can you explain why that number was, you know, so high?
I don't think it was way over budget when you look at what we carried forward from the prior year.
Right, we have, we had a lot of carryforwards in this entire, um.
It was within, like, within, within budget.
My, my question would be not so much a budget. You're able to get, it looks like you're able to get an acceptable amount of paving done based on what was spent. Uh, will that continue? Will you be able to continue that? And do we need more money in the budget?
Well, so this year is a marginal year in terms of, um, the, the paving and sidewalk. Well, I'll be honest. I was trying to be conservative with this budget because of the situation with COVID and everything else. I was trying to maintain a fairly flat budget. And, and I worked within past budgets to, to kind of determine the amount of work I was going to do. So this year, if you were to kind of compare it to last year, will be minimal compared to last year in terms of output of roads and sidewalks. But on the other hand, we had the Siemens project and some other projects that were happening. So I figured my time would be spent on some of that. It isn't saying I can't do more. I think more, it was more of me trying to, um, be considerate of not raising my budget. So if you, you want more sidewalks and more paving, then you would need to, uh, increase that line item.
Okay, two, two questions. Um, number one, is there more carryover money available for you? And do you have the ability to do more sidewalks if, if we, uh, if we increase the budget?
Okay, so I'm going to carry over a little bit of money. And my, my game plan was to use my carryover and what I have in here to do a sidewalk somewhere, which would be comparable to Park Street. But if you want anything done beyond that, you would have to add to that sidewalk budget. Um, giving you the Park Street reference as a guide.
Right.
To understand how much more can be done.
Yeah, I'm not talking just sidewalks. I'm talking road paving.
Road, road paving I have scheduled, um, I, I mean, I think road paving were all set. I mean, I could do a little bit more. Um, but I think road paving were all set. Sidewalks, I think, need more work. I think.
Okay.
I think sidewalks could use more money put in it. But again, I was trying to be conservative of my budget.
Dave, what, what, which, which, what's your bandwidth, uh, labor wise? And it's a Mark's comment. I heard the sidewalk, the size of a park street, you can probably cover this year. That, okay, fine. But, um, how many more park streets can you have before it starts being a burden on labor? Never mind the cost side.
Right. Um, well, I think, I think, uh, it, it's a, it's not just a complete rebuild in a lot of situations. It's kind of a, a resurfacing of some of them. So
Right.
Probably could go a little further with some of it, but I think if, you know, you added, you know, if you, if you, I mean, I don't want to get crazy here, but if you doubled that budget for sidewalks, I probably could make that happen.
So forty, twenty, twenty thousand dollar add.
Yeah, but that's up to you. And I, I, again, I was trying to be.
Okay.
Now, what's the difference between, um, new, where we would budget for trying to do new sidewalks versus maintaining the ones we have? And then also, what about pave arounds? What, why, like, why aren't those progressing more? And what would you need?
So pave arounds are kind of a little bit more complicated because of the survey and the going on to people's property piece of it. Um, we did do some of those. We did like four of those last year. Um, but we didn't do nearly the list that the pathways group had put together. And we can try and pick away a little bit more than that, but it's, but there's the whole um, survey and the, um, public relations piece of it. When you're, you're basically taking a piece of someone's front yard to put a sidewalk on it and they don't really necessarily always want you to do that.
Right.
Right. So do we need more money? Why is there so little money for engineering? Cause some of that's bundled into larger projects or it seems like, I mean, I, I understand that like Pearl Street and stuff like that would be budgeted separately, but just general things.
Yeah, the, like, that engineering money is like, if, um, like, like, um, if, like, by the Bates's property on Mechanic Street, there's an outfall there that goes into the river. And it's eroding a little bit. I needed to, you know, have a little bit of work done on extending that and thick rip wrapping that area to make it correct. You need a drawing. You need to validate whether or not that needs Army Corps of Engineer. Um, you know, approval, that kind of thing. That's where I would use probably engineering. Or I run into a problem with a project that I'm working on that needs, you know, some, some elevation calculations or some, something out of the box that we're not used to dealing with. That would be where I would use that or even for the survey of maybe the pave around. So I think I get that covered in there.
Or what about things like when we need, uh, the removing things in the right of way? Um.
Um, yeah, I mean, that.
The water company is calling.
That, that, that engineering could cover the cost of, uh, the survey in those locations.
Okay, so you think you have enough there?
I, I think that that is probably adequate. And if it isn't, I can use the money that Audra has in the engineering account there.
Okay. So you were saying, what, bottom line, what you're saying is the sidewalks, uh, twenty forty one account would be, you, you could accomplish, um, more if we made that forty thousand total.
Yeah, I mean, I could get a lot more done on sidewalks.
And you have the band, and you have the bandwidth to do it.
Yeah, it's just a matter of coordinating with the.
Other select board members, any comments on that? Taylor, Mark, no? Okay. Let's, let's, uh, propose that we, we're, Audrey, we raise that to forty thousand. For the budget meeting next week. Alright.
What, one question about, about that. Audrey, do you have, uh, how will that extra twenty thousand affect the, the budget instead of?
Well, I mean, I would recommend that you sort of wait until the end before we do that because we've made a lot of changes so far too.
Exactly. We'll have to, we'll have to summarize at the very end. That's why I said bring it back to total expenditures and revenue at the end.
I'm sorry, Bob, I've got one more thing.
Yeah, sure.
Um, this, it, do we have money in, for storm drains? Like, twenty thousand dollars just doesn't. Or store, why do we call it storm sewers? First of all, but we can talk about that a different time. Um, is there money, is there carryforward money? Where else in your budget do you have carryforward money, I guess, is the question? Because that's kind of shocking. The amount of money we had to spend on paving is kind of shocking. Is there other, other areas?
I mean, I think we carry forward on storm sewer, um, culverts and basins, uh, street paving and sidewalks. I think we carried forward on all of those items. Jody, do you have that?
We carried, um, thirty eight thousand in street maintenance. We carried forty three thousand in sidewalk. Um, eighteen thou, nineteen thousand in storm sewer. And, um, in, we carried forward a hundred and ninety two thousand.
We used a lot of that.
Well, back to where square one, when the sidewalk, you said there was how much in, in carryforward?
From FY twenty to this year, we carried forty three thousand four hundred.
So then we have forty three thousand sidewalk plus the twenty we're budgeting.
And we have a balance of fifty five thousand right now in that operating account.
For sidewalks?
And not including the twenty thousand we're budgeting here.
That's correct.
So it's seventy five thousand dollars. So I, back to my comment, if we can only.
No, if you're saying for this, this current year budget FY twenty one.
Yeah.
Of fifty five left.
Okay, fifty five, but we're talking about the issue, you're talking about increasing this twenty to forty thousand to increase the Dave's bandwidth to do more sidewalks, but it, and then my presumption was that was the budget, forty thousand dollars for the year, but you're saying it's not. It's more like ninety thousand dollars.
Well, if, if you, if it's not spent in this, this current year, then we, um.
You anticipate doing more in this fiscal year?
Yes.
Okay. All right. So we'll stay on that. Does those carry forwards and the rest are quite large?
I did, Jody, I didn't, I thought we used some of the sidewalk carryforward for the, for the projects that we worked on this year. I, I didn't realize that we hadn't carried forward or we didn't. I thought that carryforward amount was a lot less for sidewalks.
No, no, not from FY twenty to twenty one.
So we, I think what happened was we must have taken it all out of street paving and.
Yeah, I was gonna say, do you feel comfortable with the fifty five plus the forty being too much? Not?
No, that's plenty.
Okay. All right.
Okay.
All right, onward, onward to, um, excuse me, onward to parking lots. And trees.
All right, so parking lots, keep in mind that all of this is offset with TIF revenue.
Right. Understood. Okay.
All good.
Yep.
All good.
Trees.
The trees. This is the one, Dave.
All right, so, um, this evolved from the budget review about, you know, uh, concept of no net tree loss.
Right.
So, you know, I asked Jody for the detail and we've, historically, we, we've cut at least twenty trees down a year. And we've been doing that for quite some time now. And when we, you're talking about some of these trees are a hundred years old. You know, they have a, a diameter of forty five to fifty inches. And we end up cutting the tree down and we leave the stump in the front yard. And, and then if you ever go to plant a tree in town somewhere, you look at a spot and you're like, oh, that we could pull a tree here. And then you look around, there's an overhead power line or there's a utility underneath, so you can't pull one there. So usually the place to put the tree is where the stump is.
Right.
So, so, you know, we, I was thinking more along the lines of if we're going to do this job, let's do it from, you know, more completely, let's, let's, let's remove the stump, let's put a tree back. When we take a tree down, so we're not, we're not at a net loss in tree, um, in tree inventory.
Okay.
So, running the numbers, I, I just ran some quick numbers on, you know, if you have, a, a tree usually costs about twelve thousand a year and, and a stump is two hundred and a tree replacements, you know, probably around five hundred. Um, that, if you look at twenty trees per year, that puts us at a budget of about thirty nine thousand five hundred dollars. We budgeted thirty. So to do what I'm saying, you'd have to increase that, but just, just to maintain the twenty tree um, current cut down rate, it would have to go up by nine thousand dollars.
Nine thousand, okay. Okay. Board, any, 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 uh, comments on that? Mark?
Allison was first.
No, let Marco first.
I, I just kind of say, I, I think that's a proper way to do the, the, the tree maintenance. I, I'm highly in favor of that.
All right, Allison.
Yeah, I mean, what we're really talking about here is a, a little bit of a fundamental shift in the way we do things, which I'm really supportive of because for years, um, you know, we have this ordnance, the shade tree ordinance prevents homeowners from just cutting down the trees that are in the town, right? You know, the town shade trees. But, um, then the town comes along and takes them down and then we don't, we don't put them back. So, and there's no requirement that they be put back. So we're like constantly losing trees. And the tree planting that we're doing through the tree program has been a great idea, but it requires that the homeowner pay a third of the cost, um, at a, you know, at a minimum. And then this sort of slightly complicated process of the town sharing the cost with the garden club. And the reality is that we're just not keeping up. Um, and so we're losing way more trees. So I'm definitely supportive of, the town should just take it over. We take down a tree, we should put a tree back and it should be, and I think that's gonna, there are a lot of people retroactively, um, that would be eager to participate in that as well. So I would just want to make sure that we fund that sufficiently.
Let's, uh, Jody, uh, Jock, uh, to thirty nine thousand dollars for our discussion next Tuesday. Um, that, Dave, thanks for spending all the money. Next time, don't be so conservative.
Sorry about the mix up in the sidewalk and the street paving part.
No biggie, no biggie. Thank you. We learned a lot. Thank you, Dave.
Thank you. Thank you very much. It's, it's, it's great changes. Real happy about it.
Move on to our provider agencies and community services. This is no provider agencies, but there is community services, but um, discussion on, there was a change that the difference between town manager and the, um, budget committee was specifically, it was an increase to the garden club of two thousand dollars, I believe. Comments, board?
I'm not in favor of giving any, any agency more than they asked for, um, at this point.
Well.
Um, and the garden club didn't ask for more money and we're sort of offering to take over more of the cost of the tree stuff. I witnessed that discussion. I, I just cannot, I'm not in favor of bouncing that up.
Marco.
I, I'm, I'm fine with that. I do have a question. I, I know it was mentioned during the budget meetings is why did the, why did the Penn Bay YMCA, uh, take money away from the teen centers? Because it's, they're in the process of moving it. Um, because that's such an important service.
Yeah, so it's a combination of moving it and not reopening it this year because of the COVID restrictions.
Okay.
Yep.
But we can plan maybe for next year to be back again.
Yeah, well, well, this brings, this brings us to a, a discussion with, especially with the next select board too. And that's, you know, what we're doing with community services in ter- in terms of, I, I have trouble with how we're just picking individual that, among a list of a hundred of who deserves some money from the town of Camden. And I think it's one of the reasons why towns like Rockport don't fund any community services, including the Camden Rockport Historical Society. Um, I, I would certainly, at the moment especially, agree with folding the line on what's been, been asked for and being spent to these limited number and have a future discussion about any additions, addition, uh, to lists or whomever we try to fund. Cause I, I don't know how my, my pet uh, entities fly against somebody else's on the select board. Um, it's, 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 it's too judgmental is what I'm saying. But I, to the specifics today, I think we, yeah, we should keep the garden club at their requested amount of three thousand dollars. Okay. Onward to, um, you got that, Audra and Jody?
Yeah, sorry, Jody's, um, Jody's frozen up right now.
Well, give her some, some hot coffee.
Is there a, is there a, um, cause it seems to be, Mark, Mark is fine with the twelve thousand five hundred and, and you and Allison are recommending ten thousand five hundred?
I, I, I thought Mark was okay with.
Yeah, no, I'm fine with moving the garden club back.
Okay, great.
So two thousand five hundred, Audra, it would be the total. We agree with you.
Okay, sounds good. I will.
Thanks for clarifying that, because that's how we miscommunicate. Um, to the Camden Public Library, um, uh, you know, there is a difference between the, um, uh, town manager's recommendation of four ninety three and the budget committee added forty thousand dollars of, to the town's portion uh, of the, of that budget. Um, anybody want to start? Mark?
I'll start. Um, I was there and as, I'm sure we were all surprised that it was John French that made the recommendation to increase it by forty thousand. I support that. Had a conversation with, um, Nikki, the manager at the library about what that would mean to her. And that would mean, uh, bringing back e- employees as, as things open up sooner. Um, and, and making the library more useful for people. And as we have one of the, the most used libraries in, in, you know, this whole section of Maine and, and in some respects in the whole state, uh, I'm very much in support of it.
Are there comments? I think we've lost, uh.
Sorry, I'm having, we're having a fish.
A fish?
Issue here. Um, I am. Sorry.
You want to, shall we take a five minute break?
I am not at all. Well, sorry, I just, this is kind of a crisis that I have to help Mason with right now.
Why don't we take a five minute break?
Well, I can, I can, um, uh, we can.
Or let Bob go first.
These screen has froze up too. So if anyone wants to make changes, it's hard to do it in real time.
Okay. What, do you want to take a break?
Yeah, if we could take a five minute break.
Right. Okay.
All right.
We can do that.
Okay.
Let her reboot or something.
Thanks, Bob. See you in a minute.
Yeah, sure. I'm gonna mute myself for a minute here, Audra. If I can find my damn mouse. We're still missing a bunch of people.
So Jody was able to get back on.
Oh, good, okay. Okay, is, um, everybody back? Taylor, you there?
I'm here, Bob.
Thanks, bud. And Allison, did you wanna continue? Do you want me to?
Are you talking to me?
Yeah, did you wanna say, you were rushing off when you said something?
Yeah, I'm having, I'm having a tough time because of need to support remote school. So it would be great if you wanna share your comments.
Sure.
That would be great.
Well, yeah, sure. Um, first of all, um, I have some questions about the library's budget that I don't understand. Um, not the least of which is this line item in the, I don't think it was discussed during budget committees, line item for minus thirteen thousand dollars for in, which is basically an income to, I, I believe it's to their, income line. I, I don't understand what they're counting for, but more importantly, I don't believe they're reflecting the correct payment to Siemens for this current fiscal year. Their share of the project is twenty-four point two percent per, per Siemens. That means that their annual, um, yeah, the thirteen thousand is their annual payment after the first year. Their first year's payment is closer to fifty thousand dollars. And I know, and, and.
No, we never, they never agreed to that. They only agreed to thirteen thousand a year.
Well, this is negative.
Would have, what they would have asked for if they weren't contributing fifteen thousand a year was, um, five hundred, six thousand.
Yeah, well, my point is the town is, is financing the first year of the library's, uh, portion. The, what I'm trying, their portion of the first year's payment, which is about a total of approximately two hundred thousand dollars, is fifty thousand dollars.
But they, I'm just saying, Bob, they never agreed to pay fifty thousand dollars towards it.
I get that, but I'm just trying to explain what the taxpayers in Camden are already spending for the library because of the Siemens project is over and above a fifty percent contribution in the first year, correct?
Yes.
Yes, okay. So that amount to me is fifty minus, um, thirteen thousand, which is thirty-seven thousand dollars with the town paying in the first year on behalf of the library.
Correct, yeah.
All right. So, yeah, in my mind, we should be getting some credit mentally, but I have nothing else because it's working together with the library. That's number one. Number two is, um, honestly, my confidence in the library and team uh, is not real high in terms of the building and, and the, um, uh, needs of that facility. Three years ago, they came to us with a, a long presentation about needing help with a, uh, an HVAC system need to be replaced because it was going beyond its, its, uh, useful life of twenty-five years. In addition, there was, of course, the roof mentioned at that time too. That was three years ago. Since that time, uh, from when I can see, they, 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 well, we, we stepped in and helped to develop a program to analyze the building and see what the problems are. And by the way, in that analysis, we found that we could repair HVAC system very adequately for a reasonable cost. But in the meantime, we found they needed to replace a boiler. The boiler was antiquated. It had numerous OSHA violations, uh, safety violations, and then the Siemens project, they're replacing the boiler. Uh, to my point, I, I don't think they know what the problems are with their building. And, and more important to that, when we, we, this is discussed at the budget committee, the comment about, you know, about taking this forty thousand dollars, Mark's point is right, exactly what they said. We're gonna, we're gonna bring another full-time employee back. But there was no discussion at all about trying to reserve some, some funds in, in a, in a reserve fund for the maintenance of that building. I don't, we don't know if there are other problems in that building, but and look at our town, uh, town hall, we're redoing the roof because the slate roof has a problem. We're redoing the pointing of the building because the pointing gets bad over a time period. Uh, uh, my confidence is not there. I, I can't approve forty thousand dollars additional. Some of that money is, is used to put into a fund to, to help pay for some of the fixes. It may have to come in the future. Uh, and, and, and to that, and, and no discussion during the budget committee was made about the thirty thousand, thirty-seven thousand dollars the town is contributing to the first year Siemens payment, uh, uh, as, as a total amount. Again, I still think that, I don't know why there's a, a minus thirteen thousand dollars in their income. In my opinion, Audra, they have the accounting for the Siemens project screwed up.
I mean, that's, it's not my budget. I probably wouldn't have done it that way. That's how they chose to do it. So I can't really make any comment how they're showing.
Well, I think we need to clarify. Cause my comment, my feeling is what they've done is they put, uh, they put the thirteen, they, they think that they're gonna be, they're paying out thirteen thousand, they're gonna get thirteen thousand savings back. And I think that's wrong. So I don't think their budget is a possibility their budget's not right. That's a secondary point. We can clarify that. It's their budget. You're correct. But I still, to my point, I cannot approve, uh, forty thousand dollars addition. At, at most, it would be a, a few thousand. It would have to be put aside for, for a, uh, for a, uh, uh, maintenance fund. I do not believe that, that we don't do it with a yacht club, uh, we, we, whose facility we own. They have their own a reserve for, uh, capital projects that, the, I, I don't see the library cognizant of the fact they may need, not, I'm not saying whether we need the roof or not. That's another point. It'll work out as we go forward. But for the maintenance of the, of their building, they don't have any reserve whatsoever that I can see. Allison.
Yeah, so, um, I, I think it was a, a nice, um, supportive sentiment that came from the budget committee, but because there wasn't a, a broader conversation with the select board about some of the other discussions that we've had with the library, that it, that decision lacked some context, especially when we saw, um, near the end of the budget committee discussions, there was sort of this renewed interest in keeping the budget down. Um, there's, there's definitely been a shift away from having the library do all of their, building and grounds, budgeting and maintenance separately. And there's been kind of a, a renewed interest in having that all be really integrated with the town. You know, we've seen that with a lot of the requests that have been coming and they've, um, you know, been supportive of working with the town on things like the Siemens project and continued to say that they're not going to budget separately for like a reserve fund for building maintenance. Um, you know, building maintenance is only part of it. They, there's also ground maintenance. So we have this, the seawall, for instance. Um, that is, you know, a project that the town can definitely get grant funding for, um, if we do it the right way. But, um, if, you know, that, that depends on the library being supportive of us doing it in a way that's consistent with the, um, you know, best practices as outlined by environmental organizations and no one, all that stuff. So if, if they decide that they don't want to do certain things, that's, that's another massive expense that wasn't even brought up, um, in, in their presentation. And they've, they've shown a, a real interest in being super involved in the, in the, um, dam removal or reconfiguration project if it affects Harbor Park. But then they're, you know, they're not budgeting for anything. So that's just like another area, um, where, you know, when the seawall washes out, all that stuff, it's just nowhere in that budget. Um, I could be supportive of, you know, like a forty thousand dollar reserve fund for, you know, library projects, you know, library, kind of like we did with the, with the HVAC system before. But I think we have, um, I think we have an, an obligation to make sure that we're starting, you know, we're looking at that. It's not that I don't think money should be spent on the library, but we're gonna look pretty stupid when, you know, if, if what they say may happen, does happen with like the green roof, for instance, and that's a whole nother thing. But, um, it's just not responsible for us to outline all of these projects that big ticket items that might come up with the library and the grounds, um, and, and be budgeting nothing toward those things while, you know, throwing forty thousand dollars extra at the operating budget. And I think what I heard John say is that, you know, this, it'll be really important this year because of COVID and you know, they're gonna help kids with reading and things like that. And, um, if we were gonna put more money somewhere, I think like what Mark brought up, it's, it's a huge issue that the teen center isn't opening. We're seeing, you know, just even like the skate park is like massively used because there is this really big need, but I don't, I can't, I can't support just an extra forty thousand dollars in the, in the library general operating budget because I think it'll be needed in other places.
Taylor.
Yeah, I've got a hard time with it as well. Um, I think we need to go back to the original town manager's, town manager's recommendation on it.
There. Hey, I'm sorry, Kelly, I mean to interrupt you.
No, that's it.
Oh, I was gonna say, uh, oh, Mark, you wanted to have your finger up again.
I just wanna say one thing. I, I do support it because I think that what the library does is important. I think if we have concerns about the building and process and stuff, I, you know, it's, it's, I, I'd like to see, um, the town get more involved in evaluating their situation, getting maybe Dave St. Laurent involved. Um, because we have a, you know, a library, uh, staff and a library board, but they're not necessarily building experts and things like that. You know, the head of the library is, is a, is a librarian and you know, responsibility is there to do what a library does. And I think that maybe they need our assistance, like we did with Siemens, getting involved in helping with those situations. Instead of blaming them for, uh, not, not, uh, understanding the building problem. So this is what I have to say. It's a conversation for another time.
No, I agree, Mark. When we are having Siemens, gonna be taking a look at the, at the roof thing. And the roof thing is we have to do it and do. This is all about, uh, to me, it's all about, uh, you know, I was, I did a lot of time to reach out to the library to want, want to work with them, exactly what you just said, to help them through the minefield of a better way to fix, not replace the HVAC system, et cetera. And we will do all of that to help them. But I also want a partner who understands that these things are partially your responsibility too. So, um, it, it, what I'm hearing is we will take the forty thousand out, Audra, Jody, and, um, we'll probably discuss it again next Tuesday. It's fine. Um, but, um, but I do, I would hope, I would hope that we would definitely work with the library and the trustees to figure out how, um, whatever problems they may occur, how they're gonna be working between the city, uh, the town, excuse me, and, and the, and the board. What I heard during the budget committee was, oh, um, we don't deal with capital projects. That's the town's fault, just the town's problem. And, um, that's, that's not what a partner does, in my opinion. So we'll work on it. We'll get there. We did it. We did it with the HVAC and of course with the boiler, which they didn't really address. And, and the building envelope problems they've had. One of the biggest energy savings in the, in the whole Siemens project is the library. And one of the single most, uh, largest improvements. So with that, Audra will take that out until we discuss it again next Tuesday, okay?
Yeah, I, I just, one last point. Okay, no mind.
I just wanna say, I just wanna make it noted that I'm against taking money out.
Mark, you've said that three times. Thank you.
I know, I'm just.
Um, Audrey, do you have a question?
I just wanted to make one last point about sort of any, you know, all of the capital expenses that they're talking about are pretty huge in scale. So guarding a reserve account and just throwing forty thousand in there for it is not gonna make a dent. So I would recommend that you just sort of leave that be for now because if it comes to a situation where we need to help them finance or fund major capital repairs, it's gonna have to be done through a bond or a loan or some mechanism like that. We could, there's just no way we would able to get reserve funds in time.
I, I, I would agree with what you just said. I think they're, we're all talking about the moment. The only action I heard at the moment from the board is we will take the forty thousand out of the contribution to bring it back to the town manager's level. For future discussion, we want. For future discussion, we want to work with the library director and the, and the trustees. To work out exactly the way we worked it out with the HVAC for their other problems and we will address. At that time, then how this might work, have a town maybe involved or not, and the library being involved or not, not at this point.
Yeah, and I guess another point is that all of the savings from the Seaman project is gonna go directly to the library. We'll see the, see the savings in electricity costs, heating oil costs. So really. Any contribution that they make to the town in terms of asking us for less funding, um. For operations and maintenance to, um. If you will, pay for half of the cost of the, their portion of the debt on the Siemens project is pretty much wiped out by the savings they're gonna experience. So. It's gonna be at like a net, like a no net increase for the library, I guess is my point.
That, that, that the moment, well, they're out, they're, they're out thirteen thousand dollars a year. We, they get that, uh, but anyway.
But what I'm saying is what they get back in savings is about thirteen thousand a year. Cause they're going to experience all the savings in the electricity and the heating oil.
I'd remember the twenty six thousand total, half of which is being paid for by the town and half of which is being paid for by the library is already in their savings.
Right, but what I'm, what I'm saying is the year in, year out savings they'll experience is about thirteen thousand a year. Their budget, not ours.
Um, okay, with that, we'll close on the library. Unless there's any other comments and go on to. The harbor. Again, there's no differentiator between the three recommendations. Comments, board? Anybody have any comments, um, financing on the harbor? I think the, we have some capital later, correct, Audra, in terms of the. Capital stuff for the harbor. We won't discuss that here. Mark, you have your hand up.
I thought I saw it somewhere. There is something, a change in the pump out boat operations in terms of.
Really?
How that was being done. There were charges. We were starting to charge people for it.
We always have.
No, I thought that.
We were charging the wind, we're charging the wind jammers, but, um. We proved that in the fee schedule, but there are some pump out boat changes, I think, right?
Yeah, because we get, well, remember we get, um, we get a renovation from the state. Is that correct, Audra? We get a refund from the state on pump out charges.
Yeah.
Yeah, they were, uh, for like ninety percent, but we did vote to, to institute a fee. For the wind jammers as part of our. Fee schedule and license renewal. Discussions. And that was. Partially also with an interest of trying to keep track of that. But I think there is gonna be some kind of a change with how we're, we're putting in a new, um. Uh, attachment, connection because Lyman Morse.
Yeah, so our pump out boat used to, every, all the waste that it pumped out of other boats, it went to Lyman Morse. And pumped it there and it went into the C Street Pump Station to get into our system.
Right.
You know, that was the arrangement between the town, D P and Lyman Morse. And now because of the new construction or the, you know, renovation, um, to the area that burned at Lyman Morse, they've. You know, it's gonna be moved, so we're looking at design so that it will go straight to, on the public landing, the Bayview Street Pump Station. Is where our pump out boat will bring the waste from now on.
Okay.
And that'll be, the cost of that project will be reimbursed at that ninety percent rate by the state.
Right. I think, Mark, was your question because in the detail it mentions a pump. Out operations that on line twenty forty-six and there is no line twenty forty-six in the budget?
No, I was just, I was just remembering that, uh.
Right, okay.
Uh, Allison pointed out that we're gonna start charging.
Oh, I, I've got one comment on a change that we need to make. So, um. Nancy Harmon Jenkins asked about the actuals for the submerged land lease, land lease.
Yes.
So that number, um, is a part of a determining, determining factor is, um, revenue. Generated by the, um, area that's above the land that's submerged. And because of our revenue, that cost has gone up to about twelve thousand five hundred a year.
So which line is it?
So that is submerged, submerged land lease.
It's what?
Twelve oh six, two zero zero three.
So that should be how much?
Twelve thousand five hundred.
Make that change? If that's what it is, that's what it is, right, board?
And can you remind me, that's the yacht club?
No, that's, uh, that's our submerged land lease. They have to pay their own.
And that's, which land do we have submerged again? The harbor?
It's all of our floats.
Okay.
Yeah, any, any, um, so submerged land is, that's all owned by the state. That's all technically state land. Any sort of like dock system or pier. Over that land, you have to pay submerged land lease. I guess this used to be something they didn't charge municipalities for in the past, but. Um, they do now.
It's a silly question, but isn't there a ramp off of the, uh, off of the harbor wall?
Yeah.
Shouldn't the library be paying for that?
Get that revenue, do they?
Right, we get that revenue because that's wind jammer. It's three of the head of the harbor wind jammers.
Okay, all right. All right, so make that change then, Audra. And Jody.
It feels like at the harbor, we never have any kind of supplies for cleaning up spills. I really don't wanna get into minutia, um, because I'm tired of this. I mean, sorry, I didn't say it like that. I'm getting. We're all gonna be tired by the end of this. Um, but. What, we just need, there's, it's not acceptable that we don't have.
Yeah.
Clean up materials over there. I understand that Lyman Morse often does have some, but can we get a. And, you know, public works need stuff too. We just. Before, by Tuesday, maybe we could figure out how to.
There, Audrey, there are spill kits that are available on the market and we should have some of those on hand in the harbor. Can we get some number on having a couple? I agree, um.
Yeah.
Gas, gas, uh, gasoline, diesel fuel, whatever, just a, just a spill containment of, they're, they're readily available. And they're not that expensive.
Yes, we can do that.
Get a number on it. We can add it to this budget.
Yes.
Good idea.
Okay, um, on to, I'm not trying to push anybody, but we are quite a ways into this thing. We've got quite a ways to go. Uh, recreation, uh, cultural recreation, um, there is a, was a slight change, um. From the budget committee and the town manager and that was about, uh, twelve thousand dollars. Audra and I honestly don't remember why.
Oh, it was just, we, between, um, when I had prepared the budget and when it came to the budget committee, we'd firmed up. Negotiations with the Y around, um, summer camp.
Oh.
That's, this is just reflects the more accurate.
Okay.
Contract costs.
Okay, so the number we should be looking at is the one sixty-three, two fifty.
Yes.
Okay. Now, where, just remind me, where does our parks maintenance? Long list of challenges come out of.
Next budget.
Thank you.
Unless you're talking about the, um, snow bowl property and.
No, 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 I'm talking about, uh, you know, short tail and, and all these pieces. We know we need to do stuff with, that's all.
Yes, so that's the next one.
Okay, any comments on this one?
I just find it really confusing, the difference between parks and. No sense to me. But I, nevermind. I mean, I know the answer is something to do with snow bowl, but.
Yeah, it is a little confusing. On parks then, which is no difference between the three, uh, recommendations, department head, town manager, budget committee. You know, I will make a comment on the maintenance piece, but, um, which line I missed that, Audra?
The grounds maintenance is two zero one five.
Okay, so it's eighty-five hundred.
Yep.
Okay.
I mean, and, you know, I guess while we're bringing up points about, um, different departments and being understaffed. The parks department, we're really sort of like at capacity with what they're able to do based on the number of people they have. Just the addition of a skate park is really put a lot of. It's really, it's put a lot of additional work on everyone, but the parks department in particular.
Well, something you should take a look at and Mark, go ahead.
Uh, and looking at that, at that line, um, the, we have eighty-five hundred. Plan, but previous years it was in actuals and twenty was sixteen thousand and nineteen was ten thousand. Obviously it's lower this year probably because of COVID, but, uh, why is there, we've been going over budget for a bunch of years here? Why is it reduced?
Which, which thing are you looking at? Which total?
Maintenance.
Grounds maintenance. In, in nineteen, actual was, the budget was thirteen, actual was ten thousand, less there, but then we went to eighty-five hundred. And in twenty, the, the, the actuals was sixteen thousand. So we went below what was spent in, uh, twenty.
Right. In, in my global, the, the global question, yeah, to Mark's point, I, I, I think that, um. I know we have twenty-some parks. They all need some kind of work done and I know that to your point, Audra. That we don't have the staff to do all of that, but from short tail to Lake Beach to stairs to walls that are, uh, problems. This doesn't seem like enough money and maybe it's because we're trying to do it all in house. I don't know, but I think we need to. Do something to pay attention to funding, estimating and funding that long list of projects needs to be done in our parks. I don't have, I don't have the answer. I, I just don't think eighty-five hundred dollars covers much. I wouldn't even, I don't want to go even fix shirt till.
Oh, no, it's not even a cut, like, uh, we'll, we'll talk about that later, but Jody, you have a.
Yeah, I just wanted to, uh, for FY twenty, that expense, uh, sixteen thousand, there was a payout for late beach repairs for ninety-nine hundred dollars.
Right.
That's what spiked that. Um, line.
Well, again, to the, it's gonna, it's gonna spike because with the, the things like Lake Beach, the, that. The, I know the Parks and Rec Committee spent a lot of time going through every park and listing and they have a matrix of what needs to be done. And then it died there. Um, that there wasn't, there was no cost estimates or guest swags thrown at those line items. But notwithstanding all of that, eighty-five hundred is not gonna cover much of our. You know, you get, you gotta maintain what you have before you start building new stuff. That's the philosophy that's basic. And I think when, I don't believe we're maintaining our parks. Some can wait, of course, but some like short tail and a few others need work now. So I, I'm just think, I just feel that eighty-five hundred is too low, but I'm more concerned about we're not addressing this and not trying to get it done. Mark.
Right. Well, let me say, Audra, you said that this is one of the places where we're in the most trouble because of the skate park and et cetera. What can, what do we need to, to, to do some sort of, uh, fix for this?
More people.
Okay.
Do you have a recommendation for, or will you have a recommendation on Tuesday about?
I can have a recommendation on Tuesday, but adding more people is sort of like the most expensive and sort of like. Burdensome long-term thing, but I guess my point is if we keep adding new parks, like we seem on a trajectory to do.
Yes.
We're just not, we can't, at the, we're at the point now where we can't really maintain what we have and adding more and adding more. Is just putting more and more of a burden on our network of parks and open space.
Yep.
Adding more gra, more to the grounds maintenance, that's great, but if we don't have the people to do that extra work, then it, you know, we can't spend the money.
Well, then, maybe we should have, uh, a suggestion for adding a person there. Um, because obviously we're, we're, we're.
There's, there's two separate things going on here. One is repairs and we could probably repairs the, the, the list for the Parks and Rec Committee. Those are a list of, of things we could do probably with contractors. Or somebody else and we have, and that makes it more expensive. Then there are the things to your point, Mark, and can be done by additional staff. I think it's. I think right now we gotta repair what we have. And using outside contractors to fix short tail point, to fix their erosion things we've had and the list that, that does exist. At least a, a portion of them to fix what we have before we start even thinking about adding anything. Absolutely, um. And I, I'm not, I don't think adding a person, uh, to our maintenance items is what I'm talking about. That can happen later also. But I think it should be later, but I think the, the maintenance of the parks is physical capital that needs to be spent to fix those parks. And I don't know how much.
I just, I think we're in a really tight spot with our parks. I'm just gonna say that right now. We're in a, we're in a really tight spot. This, you know, it's all discretionary spending. We wanna hold the line as much as possible. But I think that you've given Beth a little bit of a, a mission impossible and the skate park is, I really can't. I'm a little disappointed with how that's all kind of unfolding right now because. We were all promised that that wouldn't be a burden on the town, that there were gonna be volunteers that would step up and. Do maintenance and, um, look after the park and. I haven't seen much of that. I've seen a few, um, really good parents and community members. I, I, I. Single out Wyatt McConnell and I think he's getting unfairly burdened with the skate park, but. I'm really disappointed in that situation. It's become incredibly burdensome on staff and. There needs to be some sort of long-term look at that and addressing it.
Okay. Do you, do you recommend any additional money to be spent here, Audra, in the way of? Capital work on the various parks versus notwithstanding the core, which is a shorthanded employee situation because of the load. Those are two different items.
Yeah, I would say that there's, there's definitely, like, if you're gonna put more in grounds maintenance, then we need, we need more people. And that might mean more in part-time wages and Beth and I can go away and give you an exact number on that. You know, on both the grounds maintenance and the part-time wages, but then there's some like capital pushes when it comes to the parks as well. And quite honestly, because I was trying to keep things as balanced as possible this year and come in with as little an increase as possible. Beth did put in fifty thousand dollars for short tail point and I took it out.
I see. What was the short tail point money for?
So that was to fix, um, some of the erosion issues and moving the parking area and, um.
Yeah.
I think it was adding some, uh, playground equipment as well.
Yeah, um, yeah, would I? I guess, I, what I'd like to see at some point is, uh, for. Whoever to do what they did on short tail point and make a list. Of the capital projects that would be needed over the next five years, you know, whatever time period to, uh, attack the problems we have at, at, at Lake Beach. At short tail point and it, there's a long list. Uh, there's been identified and then, then more capital projects, Audra, Audra. To the maintenance issue you're talking, they're two separate topics. I, I think you're right. If they, if they're running short in maintenance labor. Um, because we're not maintaining, cutting the grass and doing all things we have to do, that can be, you can estimate that and let us know what that might be. But in parallel, we don't probably have, doesn't sound like beyond, um, short tail. We don't have. A, 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 a substantive, the, the list populated with dollars for each of the needs we, and we need to do that in the next months. That's what I'm saying.
Yes.
And I, I've always thought the eighty-five hundred was doing that. It's not, and I get that, uh, we need to. Otherwise, you, you're right. You've gotta fix what we have before we start adding more stuff on the camel's back.
Right. I mean, I just wanna make this point because I just hear all the time, this needs to be a park, that needs to be a park. Take a skate park, take, you know, add an amenity here, add an amenity there. And we're just getting to the point where this is all very unsustainable with this level of staffing and funding.
Mark.
Uh, Audra, i- if you can make, uh, you can get together with Beth and, and make some suggestions about. What you're gonna, what you feel you need in this year's budget, both maybe in, in a person, in, and, and, uh. In funds, you know, so that, and like Bob said, there's some things we're gonna have to do over time, you know, maybe the improvements at short tail. Um, maybe not this year, but if you can do what we need now to make sustainable, so the people work in the parks. Can have a reasonable expectation of getting the job done without killing themselves.
Okay. All right, let's, thank you, Audra. Let's, let's keep moving, um.
I don't, can I?
Yeah, go ahead, go ahead, Allison.
With, I, I think a big part of the skate park problem is also a Y and teen center problem. Because historically that was the responsibility of the Y and the teen center. Taking the teen center away. At a time when after-school activities are all reduced. People are spending more time outside, all of that stuff. That's like a huge double whammy. And so. I think the town took over the skate park as a, as a stopgap kind of emergency. emergency situation and that, um, that, that money that was going towards sustaining, you know, every year from the town to help the teen center maintain operations was like a, a huge thing. And I don't know if the, it seems like we should be able to give some of that money back to the Y and say, can you help us solve this problem? We solved what was a huge issue really for the Y because they made that decision to get rid of that building really kind of quickly. And I know they were having an emergency kind of financial situation, but it's not just that the, I mean, that's why this is crumbling is because it was at least overseen a little bit by the Y.
We need to keep trucking here. And I want to, um, good, all good points, but I, um, Audrey, do what you can with getting us information on the labor side as well as the capital side. And again, we don't have to spend it all now, but we need a plan. Onto the dams, uh, we have eighteen thousand four hundred dollars in, in the five categories here. No disagreement between the three groups. Any comments on, on dams? Twenty zero eight. Not hearing any, we'll move on to, on to cemetery association and cemetery management. Cemetery Association, of course, is not any, any budget item for the last years. And cemetery maintenance is sixty thousand three hundred dollars. All this agreed to by the three entities, department head, town manager and budget committee. Any comment on cemetery maintenance? Not hearing any there. We're gonna pop on to, oh, um, I, does there anybody want to question anything with regard to debt capital? Portion of our debt principal or debt interest that are in here. These are all established bonds, Audra, that are, are the, the money is, is clearly shown here and there's not a heck of a lot we can do about it anyway. So, um, my computer.
What do you, what do you, hold on. What do you mean? These are all, there's nothing we can do about it. What is, aren't some of them new?
Um, hold on a second.
Baby Street.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. You're right. I take it back. Um, I'll, I'll see which one is new.
The performance contract.
Yes, the, the Rossin, I'm, I gotta get my lines straightened out here. The wastewater treatment plant is, um, the same as FY twenty one budget. Um, let's see, I, I don't, is there any, oh, yeah, uh, yes. The new ones are the energy performance lease, correct, Audra?
Yeah, that's the performance contract. That's the only.
Is it only one forty-three?
That's just the principal. The interest is forty-seven.
Yeah. So I'm getting fuzzy. Okay.
All right. I guess there is nothing.
No, is there, is there anything?
What was Babe, when was the Baby Street drainage? When, what, what is that?
Bond that was done a while ago. I think that.
Screen, Audrey.
What's that?
Can you move it back on the screen?
Oh, sorry. I've got you on, uh, interest.
Yeah, you do.
Did we already do the Baby Street drainage or is that?
Yeah. That was.
I, I didn't see anything new on the, uh, on the principal debt service.
Okay. Yeah, you're right.
It's just the performance contract. That's it.
Okay, that's okay.
I got fixated on Baby Street.
Hey, don't feel bad. I'm getting, I'm spinning. Um, and the same, I would presume therefore the same thing holds for the interest with the exception of the ad of the energy performance lease, correct?
Yes.
Okay. And that would then bring us to capital reserves. Account three thousand three, which does have the, a reserve for the budget committee put in one hundred thousand dollars for the Washington Street sidewalk.
Yes. So I recommended that to them because I believe the day that we went over this part of the budget, I had just gotten an estimate from the state back based on the updated right-of-way work and engineering work that
Yep.
Believe the bid price was going to be, I've padded this number out a little bit. I, I believe that they said it was going to be about ninety thousand in additional funds that we needed to come up with.
I see.
Based on how, you know, the market's been for construction costs. You know, we added an additional ten thousand onto that just to be safe. So this would be combined with the, um, money that we've already set aside, which is about, um, I think we, I think if you look at what we've already set aside in the past, which was about sixty thousand and what we've already spent on the right-of-way work and engineering, which did get reimbursed eighty percent by DOT, but still reduces that amount available for construction.
Yep.
What we have left combined with this one hundred thousand will cover our twenty percent share of the total project costs for, for the construction only.
Is this the one that's being bid with the, um, Route One South package?
That was the idea a while ago. I don't know if they're still going to bid them separate or together or.
I would, I would be surprised they did, but I thought they were coupled at one point in time. Okay. So does that change? And then there's a whole bunch of new. Let's see, what do we got for? Why don't you go, what are the ads for this year in terms of these capital reserves?
So the big ones are, um, we really need to bump up the accrued benefits line because that's looking a little too skinny right now. And that's basically what we use to pay out somebody if they're, you know, they're retiring and they've got, um, you know, believe that they're carrying it, or, or leaving or whatever the case may be. The Opera House maintenance, um, as you all know, that, uh, the cost, um, overruns for the, you know, all the work that we've done on the building and also the additional work that we elected to do because we got a good price from Noel, uh, Noel's Industries for the repoint. It put us in a situation where we really need to, um, get that account out of the red and into the black. Then, uh, IT, that's also been run down too, but, um, you know, we're, we're spending a lot from, or we've got plenty budgeted and operations and maintenance that I think we're going to be fine. And then other than the Washington Street sidewalk, um, okay, the hundred thousand in bridges, that's really important. So, uh, the idea behind that is that, you know, the Rossin Avenue Bridge Replacement with a pedestrian bridge.
Yep.
That's going to be ready to go in FY twenty-three. And so we need to contribute, um, about two hundred and fifty thousand to that project to cover our fifty percent cost share of, you know, replacing that bridge with a pedestrian bridge. So my idea is that instead of taking the hit in one year, we put away, um, enough reserve funding over FY twenty-two and twenty-three so that we're ready in FY twenty-three to replace that bridge. And so that's why I bumped that up so high.
Where is the number coming from for the total to this bridge?
So DOT is estimating based on other pedestrian bridge projects they've done, that it's going to be about half a million dollars. I think that's a bit high, but I would rather pad that out. And with all the different requirements they have.
Why, why is it, why do they have to do it? Why can't we do it?
Well, this, this is the thing too. So there's been some back and forth about who's going to do what. I'm not willing to take on the risk removing that bridge.
Okay.
But we will, you know, it might be more advantageous for us to be the ones who replace it when it gets to the point where it's all ready for new footings. So they get, they take, they take away the old bridge, get it prepped so that we can pour the footings and.
Well, we'll know more about, we'll know more about next year, Audra. And if this, this number feels high at the moment, but if it is high next year, we just put in less.
Yes.
Because I, I played the five hundred is way over what's needed to replace that. Did that five hundred thousand include demolition?
Um, no, because they've, they, they're gonna do all the demolition.
Okay. Well, it just seems high, but whatever. But that's what it is. And then you have tree conservation and habitat restoration, thirty thousand. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. So the total that, um, based on your recommendation of the budget committee because of Washington Street is three hundred and seventy thousand dollars.
Yes. Yep. I support the budget committee's change.
Okay.
And, and I have to, I agree that that's, it's smart budgeting.
Any other comments? Taylor, see you around?
Makes sense to me.
Okay, good. All right. Onward and upward or sideways, whatever it may be. Um, we have, uh, capital improvements now in here. All we really have is the, correct me if I'm wrong, Audrey, that you recommended is fifty thousand for float replacement, which we have to do, I believe by twenty-four or five. I forget which date it is.
Yeah.
We have a mini pumper truck for the fire department. It budgeted at, at, uh, three hundred and fifty thousand. Um, and then loan to the wastewater department of two seventy-five. That's because the reserve thing, which will actually be returned in time.
They'll pay us back.
Right. Is there, is there, is there anything in revenue, not, I'm jumping, I won't jump ahead, but is there anything in revenue for their first year's payment or anything?
Uh, for the, uh, fire truck?
No, for the, um, the loan to the wastewater department was because of the cash flow issue that occurred because of Rockport, correct?
Yeah. So if you look here, if the use of surplus takes that into account. You see that?
Yeah, I do see it.
Right.
But it, what, is there anything in revenue coming from Rockport?
Their revenue comes to us through their rates.
No, I mean, for the, they, they didn't, to my knowledge, they didn't refuse to pay their share of the wastewater project. They just, we're dealing with a cash flow issue.
Right. So there, that, like I'm saying, their revenue will come to us through their rates.
Oh, I see. I see what you're saying. Okay, okay, okay. But if that, if, if we're, if we're doing the capital improvement loan here from the town's general funds, basically, then how does this get, uh, it sounds like the wastewater.
They'll need to have a line in their budget to repay us.
Okay, that's my, so eventually it comes back, but we're not putting that in yet.
I, well, I, I'm gonna.
Wastewater Department will.
Wastewater. So the wastewater will receive that money from the town of Rockport through their wa, their rates. And then they'll have a line in their budget that they pay us back.
Yeah. My only question is when does the town in its books see that money in its budget for revenue?
FY twenty-two.
Thank you.
Okay. Audra, will, will we set the rates to, to do that? Or are we depending on Rockport to do that?
No, we set the rates.
We set the rates.
Okay, okay. Uh, one note that just came through in the news that I saw is that, uh, Bill Post has resigned as a Rockport manager.
That is correct. So, so the big expenses here are, well, the loan and then the three fifty for the, for the, uh, fire department, mini pumper truck. Is that the total cost for the truck?
Uh, yes. Oh, sorry. I'll go back to.
No, that's okay.
Yep, the three hundred and fifty.
Okay. All right. Any comments? All right. Onward to one, I guess. Oh, contingency, my favorite topic. Is that right, Audra? Three thousand ten?
Yep.
Okay. So three thousand ten, this was a discussion that was held and just to be clear, so we all know. Um, we know we, the hundred and forty was added last year. What is our, what is our carry forward now, Jody?
You guys carried eighty-eight thousand two hundred seventy-nine dollars to FY twenty-one and you now have a balance of one hundred sixty-four thousand five hundred and seventy dollars.
To carry forward?
That's what you have to spend through the end of this year. And then if you choose to carry forward any unspent.
And my question is, what's the balance that, uh, Audra, you feel is, is appropriate to have?
I mean.
That's a wild hard question.
That's a really hard question to answer. I mean, I guess it depends on, I would say that, um, if you don't have any plans to do, okay. So you all know that as a select board, you have very limited flexibility in terms of spending money and doing additional projects. And you know, I, I remember where there was very little, um, sort of contingency or, you know, money available and somebody would come to you and say they wanted to do this great thing and you'd have to say no to them because you didn't have any money available. So I guess the good thing about having this and carrying this forward is as a board, you have a lot of flexibility to do things that come up throughout the year that are unforeseen. I guess good examples of that, the broadband stuff. We never budgeted for the broadband stuff. Now we have all this flexibility to just say to Rockport, yeah, we'll partner with you. Yeah, we'll put thirty-five thousand dollars into an engineering study. Oh, Pen Bay and Rockport, you want to do a study on EMS? Absolutely. We, we have money to do that. So I think that's the nice thing about having a healthy amount of contingency that you can draw from. Um, I guess it's the, the line between when is it? When are you just sort of hoarding it? Um, I think that there's plenty of things that we have planned to spend. You know, prod, there's all kinds of planning projects that I could have budgeted for, but I knew that, um, all of you were in support of those projects and this money could be used for that purpose. So I would say that, um, you know, at some point, we don't have to do this as part of the budget process. We might want to kind of sit down and say, okay, we have a, we have a lot of money in contingency. We have a lot of projects that we want to see done. What, what are we going to spend this money on? And I think this money is better for things. It's, it's not enough for capital projects, but it's a lot for like, you know, planning and some of the, you know, maybe the IT stuff that we want to fund a big push on in the first year, um, things like the conference room upgrades, um.
I'd be really curious to see, um, the effect that, um, it will have on the, on the overall budget. So for example, if we, we leave it at the forty thousand, if we leave it at the forty thousand, don't carry over any, carry forward any of the remaining balance from the last fiscal year, it goes back into the general fund?
It goes back into the surplus.
So I'd be, okay. So it really won't have an effect on the overall budget then.
Exactly. Yeah. So that's not going to impact the budget. What it will impact is, um, you, you just keep sort of padding out the surplus, which isn't necessarily a bad thing, but I guess if you carry it forward and you keep it as contingency, you have the, the ability to spend that money without going to town meeting. Whereas if you let it lapse into surplus, if you ever want to spend it for anything again, then you have to go to town meeting.
I'd like to see, yeah, I guess I'd like to see what, where we're at in terms of, um, a budget increase at this point. So I think that at least for me, that's sort of a, I understand the looking at it from a project standpoint. But I also think it, it's more comfortable to look at it from a budget increase standpoint and say like, okay, maybe we want to take a hundred thousand of that and put it back in a surplus. But then we also want to take some more money out of surplus and put it into revenues.
So, so my question is, if we carry the monies forward that we have, it gives us a budget to do some of the things that you described and gives us some flexibility. If we do that, can we, uh, agree with the budget committee and not put in the additional forty thousand this year? Would, would that?
Absolutely.
Uh, because that was, it was interesting. That was one of the most controversial things I've seen in all the years I've been doing the budget committee. And unfortunately, because they, um, had a bunch of members drop off, they didn't have enough people to do the vote one way or the other. But I, I don't disagree with, if we have enough funds, if we carry forward, then we can, because we've just added in a bunch of money in other places in the budget. This would help smooth that out a little bit.
Yeah. It's a consideration for me for, you know, do we tap into the surplus a little bit more to ease the tax burden?
Um, I don't know, Bob, are you still monitoring hands or? I, I'm trying to be more conscious.
Yeah, I was calling your name and I was on mute. Sorry.
Oh, okay. Um, I mean, I think that the, the budget committee discussion was not a very good quality one due to the fact that we weren't participating. And I mean, that's not their fault, but I, I think the way Audra explained it to begin with is something that we lose sight of and that many of the budget committee members may have been looking at it sort of through the lens of like national or state politics and these slush funds or, but we, many, most towns that people are accustomed to and most cities are a city council um, form of government. And so they set their entire budget without voter approval. So we do voter approval for the whole budget. And then we get this little tiny a, amount of money for things that don't have to be planned like a year and a half out. Um, and the biggest thing that I have heard from people is a frustration that town government. is a frustration that town government is not responsive, that we've moved too slowly, that we put all these barriers up and so often saying, oh, well, we don't have this in the budget is an excuse for not doing things. I don't see that this board or any other in the history of Camden has any history of overusing the contingency. Um, really, I think what we've done is crippled ourselves when we don't really need to a lot of the time. And so since all of those decisions about how to use contingency, all of that has to be in a public meeting with a discussion. Um, that we, we really shouldn't make that pot smaller. Um, and we, we, before I would support taking out the forty thousand, I would want to see um, a breakdown of what we maybe might, you know, might need that contingency for the stuff that we would carry forward for the rest of the year, because we're not, we're not done with the year.
True.
So, I, I think it's like turns into this nice little thing, like we're gonna intentionally starve ourselves to be, I don't know, just that forty thousand dollars doesn't make a big difference, but we can make a big difference when things come to us, like maybe the why gets itself together and says, we can get a, you know, a teen center program going, or we could, you know, these types of things. I want to be able to be really responsive to that kind of stuff. Um, and I trust that we could do that, you know, responsibly. Nobody's buying themselves, you know, new shoes with.
No, I, 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 yeah, I, I, I agree.
Or the library, you know, something, God forbid, the library green roof starts to leak.
Yep. Well, and there's all kinds of buckets, and I would agree about the point you made, Allison, about being a town meeting form of government, to the, to the layman, it sounds like, and especially the history of the this, this so-called select board contingency was always kept at a moderate level because, I don't know, I think it was more political than practical. This select board is very, very proactive with all kinds of items. A couple I listed when I was thinking about contingency and where monies could be spent, and they may not be, may not be approved, but broadband, I, I see, we've already taken a chunk out, Audrey, Jody, I believe, of X thousands of dollars for broadband. That's not over. I, I can see another fifty thousand dollars that we don't know yet if we want to keep the pace of this broadband, which is going very, very rapidly to move very quickly, and I don't want to slow it down. Two, I think this is a great place when we come up against something, says, you know, we really need somebody outside service to take a look at this for us, a specialist in this area. Um, we had a lot of specialty work done by Siemens this year, we got for nothing. We didn't pay for it. Um, there's going to be things that, that are, um, material and non-material we need service for, that could be easily uh, twenty thousand dollars. Uh, the conference room, if we want to spend some money, I still don't think we have a bucket anywhere for conference room rebuild, and that could be thirty to fifty thousand dollars. So right there, I've just added up a hundred and twenty thousand dollars that we could possibly spend, and that's just my list, by the way.
Can I, I make a point too, you're only at a one percent spending.
Yes, yes, yes.
You're coming in at less than both the budget committee and what I proposed.
Yep.
With things you've made so far without.
I, 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 I think we, we have a responsibility to spend money, uh, you know, uh, uh, but you know, correctly, and I think, and I, I'm proud of what we've done with the money and the, I think we've held down the, the draw we could have done, and I think we should have opened the valve up more, frankly, to get things done. So yeah, I don't, I don't see that this is being a big item, and, and I think that it's impossible for a budget committee to understand the, the, the things that Allison mentioned about what we face every day, and we don't have the ability to go grab money without going to a special town meeting.
Can we try plugging in a hundred thousand? Um, I'd like, I'd like to see what that looks like.
Hundred thousand budget for the, for the contingency?
Yeah.
I don't understand why you want to add a hundred thousand. We already have a hundred and sixty four we can bring over, correct, Jody?
Right, I want to see what it looks like.
Okay.
In terms of the increase.
Yeah, that would put you at a two percent.
And what did, what was the balance that we have to carry forward?
A hundred and sixty four thousand right now.
Okay, so then what happens if we take fifty thousand from surplus and add it to revenues?
Hold on.
Yeah, I, I.
We need to, I don't think we need to add.
Yeah, I don't, I don't.
I, uh, I, I'm thinking, so my, my thought is, if it's a hundred and sixty to carry forward, right, and we only carry forward a hundred of that, and the balance of that, if we use, take fifty thousand dollars from the remaining and put it.
But we don't have to make the, the carry forward decision, doesn't affect this budget.
Right. Right, if we carry a hundred, see, Taylor, if we carried, if we, if we put the zero in this contingency account, we have a hundred and sixty four. We can carry forward and call it contingency.
Right.
Yes, but, but that's, that's assuming we do nothing.
Right.
With it.
Right.
Till the end of the year, and we still have a good part of the year left.
That's a good point, Allison. So let's say there's a hundred and twenty thousand dollars left at the end of the year, and we, let's say we put in forty in here. And we carry over the one twenty, and we take the next budget of forty, we now have one sixty to spend, that's the kind of. So I think the, the surplus thing we'll get to in a second, and we can talk about that, but the real question is whether or not we should put in the annual, the amount of forty thousand dollars in the select board contingency in this budget.
Yeah, I guess my, my thought was, the reason I said a hundred is that I'm not adding a hundred, but that we don't carry forward the whole amount.
Gotcha.
I think it's unlikely, you know, maybe we spend another ten or fifteen thousand dollars before the end of the year.
Yeah.
So my thought is, if we only carry forward a hundred of that, and then the remaining balance does not go back into surpluses, or briefly goes back into surpluses, but then goes back into revenue, right? That's what I'm.
Yeah, we can still do that math too, you know, we can always do that too, Allison.
I just think that we shouldn't muddy the waters too much with discussions about carry forwards right now. I mean, it's a, it's a good thing for us to have in, in mind, um, to some degree, but really we should have, when it comes to the discussion about what we carry forward, we should have a robust discussion based on what is left at that time, but that when we're planning for this year, it should be generally done with the assumption that there isn't going to be a carry forward, just so that we.
You can't look at them in a vacuum either. You know, we look at where the whole, what our whole position is, because sometimes, you know, a department head will, for example, they want to carry forward unspent funds because, you know, they didn't buy equipment they thought they were going to buy.
Right.
Maybe they overspent in another line, so if you look at the net, um, it's, you know, we can't carry forward. We can't carry forward all of it, we've only, we can only carry forward a portion of it, so, yeah, I, I just think it's just too looking at what we have now in a vacuum for each individual line, i- it's just not a wise way to budget the year ahead.
Right, like we might need to use our contingency to for, you know, something else that ends up going way over or.
Why don't we, why don't we, why don't we do this, just for mathematical purposes? Let's put the forty thousand dollars back in the, in the, uh, this line of contingency, that, that's our last line item. Look at what our general fund total expense is. Look at our revenues and our, our surplus draw, and, and we don't even have to make the decision now. You can think about it between now and Tuesday, as to whether or not we want to be more aggressive with drawing down the, uh, the, the surplus or et cetera, those other elements. Fair? Mark?
I think that's a good idea. I also have, I have a ten minute drop dead date for, for me to lead the meeting.
Okay, Mark, yeah, I understood, we, we've gone quite long enough. So, oh, Jody, if we take the, put the forty thousand back in, or Audrey, back into the, um, contingency, what does that bring our now total general fund expense to? Nine million?
Nine million, six hundred eighty seven thousand, one hundred and fifty one dollars. So that's a gross for just the gross budget, one point four percent increase over this current year.
So this is a one point four percent, so it's about, um, eighty thousand dollars less than budget committee in it, um, right?
That's not possible.
Um, because of the, yeah, because of the, uh, the library and a few of those things that we, we pulled out.
But we also add, I mean, the library was forty.
Yeah.
Right, plus also the, um, the legal line, you did some of that as well.
Oh, that doesn't, we can't.
No.
Right.
You can't think about it.
So, so nine million, six eighty seven, oh, um, nine million, six eighty seven, you say oh five, one?
One fifty one.
One fifty.
There were also things that we asked Audrey to say, to bring us a proposal.
Yeah.
Several things that could.
Yeah, we're not over, we're not done, we're not done.
I don't think it's useful even to look at that right now.
Well, I, I just want to know what it is, because I want to next look at it real quickly before we adjourn, look at the total revenues uh, and see where we stand in the total picture to, to, um, um, can we go back to the revenues, Audrey?
Are we going to talk about surplus at all?
Yeah, in a second, yeah, just give me, just, let's, let's just see where we are on the big picture. Uh, and then we can talk about drawing down, playing games and checkers and all kinds of stuff, and giving me, giving me a, um, non-sleeping pill, non-sleeping pill. Wait a minute, um, can you, yeah, we go revenue. So at this point in time, where are we, where do we stand with, um, total revenues?
Revenues are ahead, aren't they?
Jody's doing it now.
That's what I thought.
There's going to be a change because we're taking out the, um, reimbursement from Belfast, but we're adding in ten thousand for the, um, um, what you can call it, the.
Rental, that's a lot of chicken counting, but we'll see.
Chicken counting.
Oh, yeah, I see it.
Sorry, did I mess you up?
Probably.
Nope, not at all. So I'm going to take out the one forty one, three eighty six, right?
Yeah, I think I already did that.
That's for the.
Take it out, don't take it out twice.
That's for the attorney thing, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, and then what else was it, Audrey?
Um, then add in ten thousand, and it's, it'll be a new revenue line, it'll be like short-term rental.
Oh, oh, I see.
And that would be, I'll show you where that goes, that would go into the licenses, permits.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking. Yeah, I'll just, I'll just throw it in right now.
Yep.
Okay. So that would be.
Public landing leases.
Oh, that's like the, um, the harbor dogs and.
Right.
Why don't we ever review that?
I don't know, let's, let's just stay on one topic at a time. Jody, can you give us the total revenue now?
Yeah, so I am seeing total revenue, uh, three million, five hundred ninety nine thousand, one hundred twenty one.
Okay, giving us a net of.
Two point eight percent increase.
So what's the total, what would it be, the, the net to taxpayers, uh, six million, what?
Six million, eighty eight thousand, thirty dollars.
Thirty dollars, six million, eighty eight thousand, thirty dollars, okay. Now, just to, so I'm just putting all these numbers out so that you can think about them, we don't have to zero in on them tonight. But right now, we could do it next Tuesday, but given, can you give a quick summary to the board of, uh, where our reserves are in total? Uh, Jody, like we talked about the other day, uh, starting with the, I'm sorry about the phone ringing. The, um, the, uh, starts off with the four point something, one million minus the, um, sixteen point seven percent, that, that math.
Oh, you're talking about the unassigned fund balance?
Yes, yes, yes.
Yep, um, so our audit report FY twenty, our unassigned fund balance is four million, one hundred nine thousand, four hundred seventy two dollars. Um, our unassigned fund balance policy says that we need to save out sixteen point seven percent um, of the municipal budget for three months' worth of expenses, which would be one million, six hundred fourteen thousand, six hundred and seventy nine dollars.
Okay.
Um, so that would bring us down to two million, four hundred ninety four thousand, seven hundred ninety three dollars.
Okay.
FY twenty one, we voted to use seven hundred and fifty thousand of that.
Okay.
That brings us down to one million, seven hundred forty four thousand dollars.
Okay, you know, that, uh, seven fifty, is any of that being repaid, or is that just gone?
No, what is being repaid is what the town voted to use through interfund borrowing in FY twenty, which, um, the town is owed back four hundred and sixty seven thousand dollars.
Okay, but of the one, one and three quarter million that the bottom line is of the unassigned fund balance, I, I believe in our revenues of the budget committee, at least, I thought they recommended a hundred and twenty five thousand be, um, withdrawn from this? Is that correct?
Um, I think, let me see, what they voted to use.
They voted to double address, I think, address.
Yeah, so I, I said, I recommended that, um, for just pure, like, I recommended that we use about six hundred and twenty five thousand out of surplus, and that would be a combination of the loan to the wastewater department, um, the first year of the debt service on the performance contract, so that's already been voted on. And then a hundred and twenty five thousand in just general tax relief. And the budget committee decided on two hundred and fifty thousand in general tax relief.
So, so the two fifty would come out of the one point seven, Jody?
Yes.
Okay. So that, that's the only, so, so if we, if we, let me make sure I got my math right, I'm getting fuzzy. What, basically, one and three quarter million is what you had in net, with which two, only two fifties coming out, or six fifty?
There, what, what are you talking about?
I'm talking unassigned fund balance, you brought us down to one point seven four four million dollars.
Correct.
All right.
Yep.
Yeah, but does that include or not include the numbers for the budget committee, the two fifty? That they vote, okay, so that would bring it down to one point five million dollars, correct?
No, because it's more like four hundred and fifty thousand.
Yeah, it, this does not take into account anything that we're looking at right now for FY twenty two.
Okay, okay, so then, then it would be, you said, you say six twenty five, Audrey was your number, but they increased it?
Yeah, they, nine, yeah, so that's, that seven fifty nine would come out of the unassigned fund balance, that number that Jody gave you. But of that, almost three hundred thousand is going to be paid back.
From?
The, the wastewater.
Okay, oh, okay, but over time, it's not going to happen right away.
Yes, over time.
Okay, so the one point seven, but the one, one and three quarter million net, if you take in FY twenty two, you're really down to, let's say, three hundred from seven hundred, about four hundred and something thousand dollars, correct? Four hundred and fifty.
Yes.
Brings us down to about one point three million if we agree to that, that would be remaining to Taylor's question about, uh, unassigned fund balance, in, that we.
Remaining above what we say.
Above and beyond our policy.
Right. Can we see, um, do we have the, the budget committee's recommendation of the two fifty um, relief on taxes? Is that plugged into this, can we plug it into this select board, um, side of things, or is that already in there?
Yeah, I just, I, I'm using that right now as a placeholder.
So that, our current numbers reflect that?
The, the three million, five hundred ninety nine thousand reflects two hundred and fifty thousand dollars coming in as revenue from surplus. Not surplus.
Yes, the seven fifty nine is, is what was voted from this budget committee.
Right. Okay, I'm just trying to do a quick, let's see, um.
And we're looking at a one point three nine percent increase, is that correct?
No, your overall increase would be two point eight percent.
Okay.
So right down.
Revenues are down.
Yep.
Okay, uh, wow.
Now, why do we feel the need to leave so much more in surplus than?
Well, that's the, that's the million dollar question, Allison, because you, you got to remember that we, by policy, we have one point six million in unassigned reserve by the sixteen point seven percent, so you have that.
I understand that, I understand it all perfectly well.
Well then, what's your question?
Why, why are we still having so much an additional, it's literally the million dollar question, or the one point three million dollar question of why do we have a policy and then we leave double that?
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's, yeah, we, we're down to, um, after that policy, we're down to the one point three million dollars, you're right, do we, is, is, is that being overly conservative? Or not?
I'm looking at it a couple ways.
Allison, go ahead.
What's the point of the policy? What's the point of the policy if we think it needs to be doubled? I mean, it's obvious that we inherited the policy and.
Yes.
And we just refer to it and sometimes forget what it really means and.
Right.
I'm looking at it a couple ways, um, like the policy sets aside the portion of funds that we don't. And cannot touch and just sits there. I like the flexibility of Audra being able to suggest that we can simply just pay for some stuff from the surplus. Um, which we've done like with the Siemens, um, the first year of the Siemens payment, we're just simply paying for that out of surplus.
Uh huh.
Um, I think having that flexibility of being above and beyond a policy is definitely a good thing. So we have some flexibility to be able to make decisions like that, knowing that it's not gonna have an immediate impact on our tax burden. Um, but I think that, you know, I think for us, it's just like, it is a bit of a balancing game of like, what is the comfortable number? Where we give ourselves some flexibility versus when should we be sending some of that back to taxpayers? You know, through, perhaps through revenue by lowering the increase. Um, personally, I'd like to. Maybe see us in- increase revenues a little bit, um, by taking maybe another fifty thousand from surplus. Um, but that's not something I'm necessarily jumping up and down about. I'd like to see us under a two percent increase.
Um, fifty thousand, frankly, if you can do something, take a hundred, hundred and fifty out, but um. And Jody, uh, and Audra, um, you have one point six million dollars, which is supposedly the X month's worth of disaster. We've just had a disaster where we worried about COVID and people not paying the taxes didn't occur. I'm not sure, because if a disaster did occur, the worst thing that could happen is we may have to go for a tan, right? We'd have to go for a loan to pay our bills and pay interest on the, on the, on the borrowed money. Um, but I I don't, the one point three million dollars, you know, and we. Can't keep drawing down on it, of course, it'll be disappearing pretty quickly, but wh- what, what? What philosophy do you take to what's, what's reasonable and why?
Well, I mean, I think if you look over the last few years and how much we've used, uh. So it's, cuz looking at it, like the one, the year we used one fifty, I think we were all sort of getting used to. How much we had in it, there was the whole snowball thing and everyone was very worried about the level of funding available. And the unassigned fund balance, and then it turned, you know, then, so I mean, I, I think that there's been some benefit in having it. Being so high that we've had a lot of flexibility to do projects that we wouldn't otherwise have been able to do. Um, so I think that that's been a positive, or they've impacted the tax rate a lot less than they would have otherwise. Um, but I, I do see your point that if like your goal is to try and stabilize the tax rate. Using this money to do that is completely appropriate because of the fact that, you know, it is, it is. Taxes that were raised in the past that weren't spent for the purpose that that they were going to be spent for. So, I mean, I, I really see both sides of, of this. I mean, I would, I would say that. Yeah, if you're gonna use up to another hundred thousand additional and you have like a number that you don't wanna see. A surpassed in terms of percentage increase, by all means, um, use that money for that purpose. I just wouldn't recommend. You know, all of it in one year.
No, no, but what, what, what does a hundred thousand dollars additional, Jody, do to our bottom line increase? Just plug in a hundred thousand. Just for a round number. One point eight percent.
One, one point one two.
Okay, well, I'm sorry, here's the wrong line, one point one two percent. You know, I, I think. You, you also gotta think forward, because you know, we've heard talk that there, there may be next year. A requirement for reassessment of properties um in the town because of our acquired state. Uh, because our, because our ratios, you've heard that during the budget committee meetings. If that occurs, what's gonna logically happen is the middle to lower income, uh, middle to lower level home values are gonna go up the most. The most expensive ones won't, because the market went crazy at the bottom and middle end. If that happens, and we're gonna, there's gonna be more pressure on us next year to maintain the line on expenditures. Which wouldn't suggest that we would be also thinking next year about you. What I'm saying is, whatever surplus we take now shouldn't be too aggressive, cuz we may have a bigger need for it next year. If we can maintain our portion, not the schools, but our portion of the mill rate, as, as you, or lower it. Um, because of the higher valuations in the town, people's net taxes due to town expenditures will stay flat.
I, I have to interrupt, uh, I agree with you that I think, you know, in our conversations with Kerry, we had a week or so ago. Um, it's, next year could be a rough year for people, and we need to be aware of that, uh, and I do need to leave, so uh.
All right, thank you, Mark.
Great discussion and.
But we're, 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 we're kind of near the end, Mark, and we'll pick it up again on uh between now and Tuesday, of course. Thank you, bud.
Yep.
But um, so you know what I suggest we do is, cuz we've been at this for three and a half hours, well, not really three hours, we got another topic. Is that we plug in some number that we, like a hundred thousand dollars for now, and. And then we can always discuss it going forward, but I, I think it, cuz I, I feel comfortable with. Uh, not one point three, but one, one and a quarter, one point two million still remaining, and I, I would even be more aggressive, but that's just me. But I am thinking forward to having to be a little more aggressive next year also.
I think that's a smart way to look at it. I, I agree with your, your sentiment and um appreciate the forward thinking about. How the valuation may change next year and affect people, people's wallets directly.
Yeah.
I, I liked a hundred thousand dollar placeholder, at least for now, um, and I am comfortable with an increase as a, you know, a one in front of it.
Well, if, if that's okay with everybody, when I, when I'm voting on it, of course, we'll just plug in a hundred and we can go up, down, sideways. Uh, on Tuesday, uh, with that, but at least you have a good feeling for what, um, and by the way, if we could get this. Allison, go ahead.
Hold on, plug in a hundred or plug in a hundred more than what the budget committee has?
Hundred and more.
Okay.
Yeah, uh, if we could get this revised model to us during the week, it'd be very helpful, so I'd like to myself take a look at. I'm gonna get less fuzzy about what all that we did and where we are and have a, so we can have a truly substantive, um, succinct discussion. On uh Tuesday, the twentieth, to approve a final budget.
I, I also think we really need to remember that we gave Audra some specific tasks to come back.
Yes.
With numbers and, um, some of those things are things I feel pretty strongly need to happen. I also agree that we could be a little bit more aggressive with surplus.
Yep, um, yep.
So I think we shouldn't send, I, I'm concerned about sending Audra off with. Kind of the message that we've been just trying to get the budget down, down, down.
No, no.
That we had previously given her the task of.
No.
Kind of solve some problems.
I agree, in my mind, some of those things she make, additional staff or whatever it might be in parks, whatever. We might wind up with another hundred thousand dollars we wanna spend, and maybe we'll take another hundred thousand dollars of surplus, who knows? Well.
Yeah, I agree.
That's a select board decision for next Tuesday. I'm just thinking that we've, I'm hoping you all feel that we've gone through this in enough detail. So we know the, the top twenty percent we need to close on next Tuesday, that's all. But Audrey, yes, any, any of those pieces you have, uh, you know, cuz like I said, I just, I'm just, a hundred thousand is just a placeholder. Uh, we may increase it, decrease it depending on Audra's input, uh, or other input between now and then. Great?
Three hundred and fifty thousand, I think would be the placeholder, but.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's, that's what it is now.
Yep, yep, yeah, exactly, whatever the number is, and, 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 and by the way, uh, Jody. Uh, as a parallel to sending out or whoever sends out this budget to us. That calculation of unassigned, maybe you could have another spreadsheet attached that shows that, that where we are right now. Very helpful, so we can use that next Tuesday in a meeting also.
Sure.
We don't have to confuse me again, cuz I can't remember numbers, not, anyway, um. I'm gonna call it a day, uh.
Yeah.
I think it's time, and I'm, I'm sorry we took so much, but it is like last year, it's very important, and you all do a great job. Um, thank you, Jody and and Audra. Sorry for a little, if we can help with any of the pieces between now and then, please don't hesitate to reach out. Uh, cuz we know your plates are full already. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Yeah.
All right, ciao.